We have now called to order the City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, July 25th. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Rohrbach, Aquino, Chalamchela, Rodriguez, and Kozlowski is absent.
All right, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. There is a revised staff report for item 10 and an additional information transmitter for item 12. A copy has been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay, thank you. Would the clerk please call the next item? Your next item is Business from the Floor. Okay, Business from the Floor is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There's a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that will display the time you have remaining on your three minutes. The color will change to yellow when you have 30 seconds and turn to red and blink when your three minutes are up. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the City Council. Are there any requests to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have one request to speak this evening from Robert Dresser.
Good evening, Robert.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone, and thank you, Mayor, for your courtesy whenever I've called you. I really appreciate your courtesy. However, I had made a Public Record Act request some months ago, asking for the amount of money that was spent so far and how much anticipated to be spent in defending the lawsuit about the by-district elections. And though I did receive a response, it really didn't have the money amounts, and I really would appreciate if the city would respond in detail as to how much has been spent and how much they anticipate spending. So it seems to me, this is my guess, I could be wrong, over a million dollars of city money has already been spent on the two appeals with no end in sight. And that's not even spending any money on the plaintiff's attorney, which he's received zero. As you remember, we, the plaintiffs, not myself, I'm not a plaintiff, had asked the city to go to by-district elections. City didn't do it, lawsuit was filed, then the city did it, which is fine. Today's rulings in Superior Court denying the motion to dismiss the 2022 lawsuit and denying the demur, at least putting it aside as moot at this point, I think significantly enhances the plaintiff's chances of prevailing. In that ruling, in one of the rulings, the court said, even if plaintiff's appeal is unsuccessful, they may still be able to establish viable claims for violation of the California Voting Rights Act and the Fair Maps Act as alleged in the 2022 complaint. So having said that, I would respectfully request, especially in light of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals granting hearing in October on the plaintiff's appeal, which might mean they're going to overturn the federal district court judge which dismissed the plaintiff's lawsuit, the first lawsuit filed in 2020. The bottom line is that, given the rulings today, which I think are permanent now, I could be wrong, maybe they're going to be appealed tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon in court, I would respectfully request that the City Council show prudence and common sense in trying to come to a settlement, because I think over a million dollars of city money, which I understand is scarce, has been spent pursuing the two appeals, not just one but two, after the city removed the case to federal court. And it looks to me, and I could be wrong again, that there's a big chance the city may lose ultimately the two lawsuits. And if that's the case, then the city's going to have to pay attorney fees for the plaintiff's attorneys, which could amount to a lot of money. So I just respectfully ask that you consider that, and specifically, Mayor, if you would be kind enough to have the city give me some more specific response to the Public Record Act request as to how much money has been spent, both on city staff, city attorney, private firms, and also how much might be spent pursuing the two appeals, now not one but two.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you.
You have no further requests to speak under Business from the Floor.
All right, would the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item is Scheduled Presentation, item number one. This is Folsom Water, a presentation detailing the city's water rights, contracts, supplies, and demands for current and future water customers.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. Tonight I have hopefully a short presentation on the City of Folsom's water supplies, contracts, future water use, current water use, and hopefully all things related to city water. This is a brief outline of what I plan to cover this evening. The water supply, Folsom Reservoir as being the prime source of the water for the city, water rights and assets, so what do our contracts maybe mean and say, water use, current, past, and moving forward to build out some of the challenges we face, whether it's infrastructure, regulatory or legislative, or even hydrological opportunities we see, not only for Folsom but within the region, what the rest of 2023 looks like, state and city actions that have taken place in the past, most recently during the drought period of 2020 through part of 2022, and then the city messaging and outreach that went along with a lot of this work thanks to our communications team. So, City of Folsom Water Supply, why do we have it? One, for public health and safety. Two, to meet the water demands of the current and future city water customers. It does help with economic development. In order to bring a customer base here, you need a water supply to serve those customers. Environmental enhancement, so there are reasons, whether it's in Folsom Reservoir or the Lower American River, water supplies do provide an environmental enhancement. And then the recreational opportunities. And I can't speak on behalf of State Parks, but I imagine years like this are much better than the past couple of years, especially in Folsom Reservoir. But if you also look at Snowpack and the snow that was accumulated this year for all those places that remained open almost through the Fourth of July. Folsom Reservoir, this is a picture of Folsom Reservoir. It's a nice full reservoir here. You can see Folsom Lake Crossing here, the new spillway located on this side, the auxiliary spillway, and all gates releasing water at Folsom Reservoir. This is the city's primary water supply source and location. Folsom Dam and Reservoir, many people might not know this, but it is a multi-purpose reservoir. It is operated by the Bureau of Reclamation. It is part of the Central Valley Project, so owned, operated, and maintained by the federal government. And there are requirements for water releases. It is a flood control facility first and a water supply facility second. So not many people know that, and in case people don't know, this is not a facility operated by the Folsom, the city, so we don't have knobs or controls on that reservoir. But the requirements for releases from the reservoir, flood control, which we saw plenty of earlier this year, environmental flows for the Lower American River, so there's during times in the spring, in the summer, and then in the fall, there are certain release requirements that are monitored and required by the Bureau of Reclamation, delta water quality, so when there are challenges of salinity control in the delta, which means that there may be a tide pushing saltwater into the delta, freshwater is released either from the state or federal systems. Folsom Reservoir happens to be the closest, which is about a day to get water from the reservoir to the delta. Shasta and Orville can be anywhere from three to five days, so there are a lot of times when Folsom Reservoir is called upon to meet delta water quality needs. And then there's other water uses, whether it's municipal and industrial or agricultural, either in the delta, along the American River, or south of the delta. This is just a cutaway of Folsom Reservoir operations, and it just identifies how reclamation operates their facilities when delivering water to the city, the City of Roseville, San Juan Water District, and Folsom State Prison. I won't go into too much of the details here, but right around elevation 330 or a little less than 100,000 acre feet in total volume, that is when reclamation has to, would have to begin using any emergency operations. And I'll show near the end of the presentation just what that looks like and what that means for reclamation and what that means for the city. This is a picture of our water treatment plant, so Folsom Reservoir is out here. There's a pipeline that runs through Folsom Prison and up in this direction here and into Randall Drive and then into the treatment plant. And I will offer, if you haven't had a chance to visit the plant, just let me know, and we'll be able to, we'll be sure to show you around. So, water rights and contracts. The city has two primary contracts. One is for what we call pre-1914 water or appropriative water rights, and so those are based on acquisitions before 1914. And the other is a Central Valley Project repayment contract, and these are typically known as post-1914 water rights. The two buckets on the left, one contract we have is for 22,000 acre feet, another contract we have is for 5,000 acre feet, and I'll explain these a little more in the following slides. And then the Central Valley Project contract is 7,000 acre feet. So in total, the city has 34,000 acre feet of water rights and contracts. And just for the purposes of the audience and all of us, these date back to 1851, which are some of the most senior on the American River. So, contract language. Each contract has the following included, that is a place of use. So where can you, as an agency, physically put the water to use? The point of diversion, where can you physically take the water? So the city has two different points of diversion. One is at Folsom Reservoir, and the other is along the Folsom South Canal. So those are the two points that the city could physically divert that water and deliver to customers. The quantity of water, so the volume, the 22,000, 5,000, and 7,000 acre feet. The rate of delivery, so how much can be delivered in a maximum flow rate. Shortage provisions, if there are any in the contracts. The two pre-1914 contracts do not have any shortage provisions in them. The 7,000 acre feet Central Valley Project contract does follow a municipal and industrial water shortage policy that the Bureau of Reclamation puts together, and the way they work that into their operations is they identify allocations each water year. So usually in February, reclamation will announce, okay, here's an initial allocation. That could be anywhere from 0% to 100%. And then as the water year goes along, in April, then in May. In May, they make a final allocation and identify, okay, City of Folsom, you get 100% of your contract amount this year, or 75%. We've seen it down to 25% in years past, but it hasn't impacted us in terms of shorting any water to any customers or having an actual physical water shortage. And then the payment terms. So it identifies, okay, there's a rate and schedule in which the city would have to pay reclamation per acre foot of water.
Marcus, just to reiterate for public, the shortage discussion in May happens only on that 7,000 acre feet.
That is correct.
Not on the 27,000 acre feet where we have already, we should be getting if we have a need of using all 27,000 acre feet.
That is correct, and that's in our contracts with the Bureau of Reclamation. Now I will, I guess, caveat that, that the state or the governor, if the governor issues an emergency order or an executive order that demands a certain reduction for all water agencies across the state, then we would have to comply with that, which is something the governor did a couple of years ago, saying, okay, every, all agencies need to implement their Stage II water shortage plan, which was up to a 20% reduction requirement. So there are times, even if there isn't a physical shortage, like we would not indicate that the City of Folsom would have a shortage that we could not meet our customer demands, the state can still come in through the governor's office and say, here's a state of an emergency. I thereby give the State Water Resources Control Board the authority to make certain provisions, and then we as the city, and then other agencies would then have to implement that within our, either our district, our city, or our county.
Got it. Thank you.
It's very similar to what we've had to do the last, I don't know, five years-ish when the state had restrictions on water?
That is correct. So we did stuff from 2014 to 20, halfway through 2016, and then very similarly, 2020 through 2022.
Thank you.
Right. You know, since we are asking on the same subject, if you don't mind, can, for audience purpose also, we are 1851-year kind of water rights. We have about, give or take, 30 agencies are drawing the water from Folsom Lake. So what exactly, for a public purpose, what does that pre-201914 means, where we are in that line of priority?
Okay, so in terms of water rights, there is a, what is called a priority system. So there's post-1914 and pre-1914, and typically, when there are physical shortages, or what the State Water Resources Control Board will identify as a shortage within a river system, so the American River Basin or the Sacramento Valley, depending on where you're physically located, they will come in and identify, okay, X basin is short by, let's say, 100,000 units. And then they will go through their priority system and say, okay, your contract was developed in 1980, you're the first agency to get cut, you have to go maybe to public health and safety levels. And then they'll go to the next set of agencies, maybe in the 70s, 60s, 50s, and then ultimately they could get to pre-1914 water rights, but essentially what the state will come in and do is what they call is a curtailment and identify, okay, you cannot divert X water from the system during this time period except for public health and safety, and then you, as an agency, would have to submit what your public health and safety levels are, and basically that's, you know, human consumption and then a certain percentage for businesses and retail establishments to operate. But it does, it would take a while to get to 1851. The water year would have to be pretty, pretty difficult, and it's typically several water years that it would take before you'd get into the 19, pre-1914.
Pre-1914. On top of your head, if you don't have the answer, fine. How many agencies in that pre-1914 out of those?
I could find out. I don't even want to venture to guess, but I could definitely find out.
Thank you.
So, pre-1914 water rights, the cities, as I mentioned, date back to 1851, originated with the Natomas Water and Mining Company, and then over the years, those rights were sold to other agencies. So Natomas Water Company then purchased the water from the Natomas Water Mining Company. Southern California Water Company, who is now Golden State Water Company, subsequently purchased those. The city purchased 22,000 acre feet in 1967, and then in 1994, entered into agreement with SoCal Water, who's now Golden State Water Company, to reallocate 5,000 acre feet in perpetuity. So that's how we get the 27,000 acre feet of pre-1914 water. The Central Valley Project water, this was authorized under this public law between Sacramento County Water Agency and the United States Department of Interior. There was a section within the contract that allowed the Sacramento County Water Agency to enter into a contract with the City of Folsom for 7,000 acre feet. We then split from Sat County Water Agency's contract and had our own 7,000 acre foot contract. And then back in 2019, that CVP water service contract was converted into what reclamation calls a repayment contract. And essentially what that does is that provides that contract in perpetuity as well, whereas before, every 20 or 25 years, the city would have had to work with reclamation to renew that contract. And then what other water agencies that converted to what's called a repayment contract, even had shorter timelines, could have been, you know, five or 10 years. So this really allowed a little bit of flexibility for reclamation to not have to do contract renewals every two to five years, depending on the cycle they were on. And so back in 2019, the city was able to join this group under federal law and subsequently sign that contract. So, place of use, this just identifies where water can physically used within the city. So the pre-1914, this dashed green line is the water service area, so there is Aerojet property that is within the city's water service area. The darker red line is the Folsom city limits, and I apologize, there is a little section here for the courtyard area that's not on here, so we will have to update that map. And then just this identifies where water can be used. Up until, I want to say, 2017, 2018, the CVP water could only be used in this area that was highlighted as yellow, which is essentially the Empire Ranch parts of Broadstone. But we were able to work with reclamation to expand that to be used anywhere within the city limits, just not outside the city limits. So water can't be delivered, that's colored CVP water, but anywhere else within the city we can deliver water. And then up in this portion, even though it's within the city limits, this is actually water supplied by San Juan Water District to American River Canyon North and South. So if you live there, you are a San Juan Water District customer. And then they also, in this area, which we typically denote as Ashland, San Juan Water District does wholesale water to the city. There's about probably a little less than 1,100 customers in that area between residential and non-residential. San Juan wholesales that water to the city, and we resell that water to those customers, but that does not count against the city's contracts that we have with reclamation. So just water use trends, this just shows, you know, what has been happening for the last, you know, 14, 15 years within the city. You can see just how much water has been used. You can see the spike in 2008, the highest water year use, and we've denoted just how much in blue, which is treated water, and then water in green, which is raw water that we deliver to Aerojet. So the city does have a contract to deliver raw water to Aerojet, and that is up to 2,700 acre feet per year now. And you can see just over the years with their facilities closing on the testing side and the production side, that water use dropping down significantly. And you can see that, you know, our water use is trending down even though our population is increasing, and we see that within the state and within the region. So that's a good trend for, for the city.
Is that just part of people conserving water?
It's probably a handful of things. One is just behavioral changes from the droughts. You know, you might do things differently, you might take advantage of rebate programs, change out toilets, washing machines, convert landscaping, put efficient landscaping irrigation equipment in, you know, better controllers. In 2013, the city did go to full metered billing, so prior to 2013, only the non-residential sector was billed based on metered usage, and in 2013, that then became a citywide to include the residential usage. Prior to that, it was a flat rate, so you can probably understand that if you only were paying $25 to use as much as you wanted, there, you probably weren't as concerned with the efficient use of that water. There's a lot of investment made for leak and loss detection on the city side to go and find leaks and fix those leaks within, within the system. So it's a handful of things that have brought that down, and now, kind of maybe more so than ever, there, especially during the past couple of droughts, there's been a lot of focus at the legislation to drive water use down and make water use efficiency and conservation what they call a California way of life, so.
Was it in 2013 that they started implementing the meters, or were they completed implementing residential meters?
So they were, we completed the meter installs in the 2009, 2010 timeframe. And then we had just, I don't want to call them fake bills, but we had information for customers and residents from 2011 and 2012, basically said, okay, if we were to adopt X rate, here is what you would be paying for the water you're using. And then in January of 2013 is when the billing was implemented.
Mm-hmm. Got it. Thank you.
This is just showing monthly water use. You can see what, how we were in 2013, but what's also interesting to follow is, and, you know, with the different years, they do follow a pattern in precipitation. So when you have years and months that are higher precipitation, the water use is generally down, and you can correlate those dry winters and dry springs with higher peaks in the winter and the spring. This, you know, really isn't showing, I don't think anything that probably people wouldn't, you know, guess or look at, but it is just nice to show that you can see just over the years, we are also just dropping down, you know, total volume, but even per month, even though we have more customers and our population is growing. So, supplies and demands, what does that look like and where are we going? So, Ashland, that's the system north of the river in, not San Juan's territory, but within the city, that San Juan wholesales water to the city, and we retail that. These are projected demands going to build out Folsom as, from basically the river to the plan area, including the Aerojet area and the East and Glanboro locations within Aerojet is included in Folsom. And then we do have water losses, and then raw water delivery to Aerojet and Rocketdyne. You can see that in total, about 19,000, a little less than 19,900 acre feet at build out, we're about 25,500 acre feet. So you could see that that's far below the 34,000 acre feet that the City of Folsom has rights and contracts to.
That's a big question that I think all of us get up here is, is what's going on with the water and will we have enough water? And I can quote you and tell people, you know, we have, you know, we have sufficient water even at full buildout of the Folsom Plan Area. So I think that the prior, oh, is this it? This, I think it just shows that we're within the means of the water that we have.
And then I'll get into, you know, further in the presentation, just discussions on some of the challenges that, you know, might prevent us from maybe having full access at Folsom Reservoir, because sometimes it's not just contractual, but there might be physical infrastructure or even precipitation or climate challenges as well.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you are predicting like 2030, for example, or full buildout, are you also considering commercial properties and the elementaries, the high schools that are supposed to be built as well?
These are all customers, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the water losses.
Yes.
Do you mind to explain one more time?
So the way that, that water losses can be calculated, one is it could be physical, so leaks and losses, which, you know, we just typically put in around 10%. We hover sometimes between 8 and 12% on average, based on water audits that were required to submit to the state. But you also have meter inaccuracies that could be 1 to 3%, so every time you're reading a customer meter, or every time you're reading a production meter, there is some error in there. It's not going to be 100% all the time, and so we combine these different factors to say, okay, here's about how much water may be lost that is not accounted for, but we have put together the calculations just to show, okay, in order to provide the data and the numbers to the state, there is a full audit that we have to prepare each year, and part of this is just forecasting what that would be each, you know, five years as shown here, and then ultimately at buildout. Our target would be less than, you know, the 2,000, 2,200, 2,400, 2,700, but the idea here is we're showing, even though those numbers might be slightly higher than what we'd ultimately strive for and like to see, even with that factored in, we're still less than, when you factor that in with everything else, we're still less than what our contractual amounts have.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just some information to show, you know, some numbers in context, just to identify, you know, on a calendar year, just how much of our contractual rights we're using by percentage. You can see, most recently, we're kind of in the 52 to 54, 55% range. If you look at just the total volume of the reservoir, if it was just a standalone bucket, you know, less than 2% of the entire reservoir, and if you look at just average annual flow that comes into the reservoir and out of the reservoir, which is calculated about 2.7 million acre feet, we're less than, you know, a percent of that total amount. And you even look at buildout, 75% roughly of our contracts, a little more than 2.5% of Folsom Reservoir as a entire bucket, and still less than 1% of the total amount of water moving through the reservoir. So, you know, a lot of times, a narrative's out there, okay, if you just stop using water or, you know, use less water, even if the City of Folsom didn't exist, is a small drop in the bucket of Folsom Reservoir as an entire operations, and even smaller if you factor in the entire state. So we just like to provide this as a little bit of context of, you know, the city itself is not a significant water user or even a significant user of water from Folsom Reservoir. So, some of the challenges, groundwater doesn't really exist in the city, so that is something that we do not have access to. Some of our neighboring agencies do, so they can have surface water and groundwater. Building in infrastructure redundancy, so we've seen some of these challenges pop up with other agencies, but we've also seen it here back in 2009, when the main pipeline from the but we've also seen it here back in two thousand nine, when the main pipeline from the city to the water treatment plant actually collapsed during reclamation shutdown. It was February of two thousand nine. Luckily, it was raining. We had all of our system basically filled to capacity and it was a planned outage. But, you know, we want to plan for the planned, but we also want to plan for the unplanned. And so that's something I'll get into in the opportunities. Drought conditions are always a challenge. Climate change, you know, any projections and people you talk to, the American River Basin study that was completed just showed that there's going to be more precipitation, less snow, and that possibly could be coming earlier in the season as opposed to later in the season. So that presents different challenges, not only for reclamation, but okay, when that water's stored, how it's delivered, how does that impact our agencies and the regulatory environment? So there's always challenges at the state with the State Water Resources Control Board. They have their long-term conservation regulations that were passed, operations of the Central Valley Project as a whole, and then the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan. So these are all things that we're currently working through, not only at the city, but with partners through the Regional Water Authority. So these are, you know, just those different impacts to the city's water supplies and they might impact it in different ways, but each one is something that is necessary to plan for. So these are just some pictures showing drought conditions and a nice condition in two thousand seventeen, just as some contrast, but you can see nineteen seventy seven, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seven, and two thousand seventeen. I don't have a picture yet of two thousand twenty three, but I imagine it will look a lot like two thousand seventeen there.
This was. This was taken all at the same time of year?
I don't believe they were. I'd have to go and check the actual dates on these. So in terms of emergency operations, this is one thing that reclamation has done in the past. They've done this twice now. Luckily, we haven't had to physically use them to deliver water to the city. But what they do is on the upstream side of the dam, they do place ten floating pumps that they operate and they pipe that up and over the dam and connect to the pipeline that delivers water to the city and the prison. They did operate these in two thousand fifteen, just to test them out, to make sure they were working. And they did that again in two thousand twenty, just to make sure they're operational and working. But they never physically had to use these to meet the city demands. We never got to a point where it was low enough, but reclamation, these are items that reclamation has purchased and they physically keep it at their facility in Folsom.
And Marcus, the prison has its own water rights and its own water treatment plant. Is that correct?
That is correct. I believe they have two thousand acre feet in their contract and they do have their own water treatment plant on site. So what are the opportunities that we have? One is inter ties with other agencies that have access to groundwater. We did this back in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen with Golden State Water Company. We have a project that we're working on with San Juan Water District. Not that San Juan Water District has access to groundwater, but their wholesale agencies, Fair Oaks Water District, Citrus Heights Water District and Orangeville Water Company do have access to groundwater. So there may be opportunities where they would pump more groundwater, leave a little bit of water in Folsom Reservoir that can then be delivered to the city and it's through a connection on Rainbow Bridge. And there's a project that we're currently working on that's under construction now to rehab that pipeline and that connection to the city. Regional conjunctive use, this is the Sacramento Regional Groundwater Bank and it's a number of agencies collectively within the region that are trying to identify ways in which you can take water from the surface and actually put it into the ground. There's typically two different ways you can do that. You can physically take it and pump it into the ground. Or if you usually pump groundwater, you can reduce the amount of pumping you do and somebody can deliver surface water to you and that's what they call in the recharge. So we are working with the region and hopefully in about eighteen months or so, the environmental work will be complete and the region will have a, what was called a federally recognized groundwater bank, which would then allow federal contractors to actually put water in the ground and then find a way to take that out later. And that can be done in a couple of different ways for the city. One, maybe there's infrastructure we build somewhere west of the city and pump that water and deliver it to the city. Or, which is probably something that maybe more, I guess, realistic would be an agency like Golden State Water Company who has access to surface water and groundwater. They would pump groundwater that we would put into the ground during wet years and then they would leave the surface water in Folsom Reservoir for the city to use. Aerojet Groundwater Extraction and Treatment or Get Water. So as you're probably all familiar, there's groundwater that Aerojet has to treat every year. And I don't know how many years that's going to have to go, but fifty to a hundred at least, just to treat the contamination plume there. One of the opportunities there is to take that water and use it for landscape irrigation purposes. So we're looking right now at a plan to possibly do that in the Folsom Plan Area and then within that Aerojet property area when that develops. One thing we're working on with our partner agencies, and this is more infrastructure related, is the water supply delivery alternatives analysis. So if that main pipeline at the dam, if something were to happen to that again, what are some options that we would have outside of those emergency operations as an opportunity for Folsom, San Juan, the prison and Roseville to coordinate on potentially having a project that we could all participate in? The Folsom Water Vision process, I do plan to bring an item next month to select a consultant for that. But that's a further analysis to look at different opportunities within the region as reliability or redundancy of water supplies to the city. And that could include groundwater, it can include conjunctive use, it can include inter ties. But we want to start developing a fairly solid plan, which then we can share with you as the council and then identify, okay, here's what it might cost, what would you like us to do? And then Folsom Dam Operations. So there are long-term operations that reclamation does have to go through every four to six years, maybe eight years. And they look at their physical operations of all their facilities and are there improvements that could be made that would help benefit not only water supplies, but the ecosystem? So one thing we're looking at with reclamation is what's called the Flow Management Standard. And that is directly tied to Folsom Reservoir, Nimbus and the Lower American River. And so that looks at flows, temperatures, and then a planning minimum for Folsom Reservoir. So we're currently doing that work with reclamation through the Waterform. So just an outlook, not surprisingly, the outlook looks good for two thousand twenty three. So no concerns really right now. One of the bigger challenges that reclamation actually had here locally with Folsom Reservoir is that because they follow a rule curve with the Army Corps of Engineers for Folsom Reservoir, because it is a flood control facility, they do have to have a certain amount of space on certain dates in the fall. So when October one hits, November one hits, there has to be a certain amount of room in the reservoir in case they get a big storm event. And so one of the challenges that they thought they were going to have and they've been able to just find a good landing spot is just how much water is in the reservoir at the end of the summer, which is going to be higher than what they typically have. So in the fall, we'll probably see higher releases than normal, not releases from the floodgates, but just in the river itself. And so just, you know, the challenge they have is maintaining that in the fall period so that when that potential first rain event comes or hits or multiple rain events, that there's enough flood control space that they are meeting their legal requirements.
This is good information to have because we will get those phone calls as far as why is water getting released?
Yes.
At that time.
So in terms of state actions, so what has happened at the state level? You know, August two thousand twenty one, there was an emergency drought regulation and this is where water suppliers, including the city, had to implement their Level Two action of their Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which was a twenty percent reduction for the city. And essentially what that meant was we would switch to only allowing two days a week of watering on even and odd schedules. And then there was a requirement in that drought regulation of prohibiting non-functional turf irrigation for commercial, industrial and institutional sites with potable water. So there are areas within the city that couldn't be irrigated, even if they met a two-day a week schedule. And one thing with this is that has continued currently. And there are a couple of legislative bills that are looking to make that permanent. So there will be spots, I know within the city and I know this will have an impact on parks and rec. So I'm trying to do my best to keep Kelly and Zach informed as best as possible because there will be impacts to, you know, not only their operations, but the look in certain areas within the city.
So Marcus, question on that. So last year, one of the questions that I got a lot from people is, how can you be building south of fifty when we have these restrictions where we can only water our yard twice a week or something? But even if we had stopped all building south of fifty, these state regulations would have still applied to everybody else in the city.
That is correct. So regardless of whether we were building or not building, the regulations imposed by the drought regulation, which originated with an executive order, an emergency order at the governor's office, then handing that authority over to the State Water Resources Control Board, we would still have to comply with those, you know, temporary or short-term regulations until they expired.
Mine is a follow-on question to Sarah. Was there any scenario Folsom put some controls or imposed some rules outside state regulations because we don't have enough water?
No, the city did not have to impose any extraordinary measures outside of what the state was requiring.
Got it. Thank you. I just want to make sure because I'm glad you are providing all this great information. And this is where when residents, I think most of the residents, summertime, this is the question we get. And we want to send the residents to see this presentation. That's why we are asking those follow-on questions, especially that south side, south of fifty construction and our water. The regulations on top. So Folsom City did not put any controls on our residents. We are just passing down from state to county to city.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. And then in April of two thousand twenty three, that executive order rescinded most of the drought requirements. As I mentioned, there is a continued prohibition of the non-functional turf watering. But they did include some things that were helpful for the state because of how much water was out there is streamlining the process for groundwater recharge projects. So there's areas within the state where their groundwater basins are in pretty bad condition. And so this did allow some of those areas to recharge those groundwater basins. It didn't directly impact our region, but that is something that was very beneficial during that time and during that, you know, when the restrictions were rescinded. But like I mentioned, there was still that prohibition of irrigating non-functional turf with potable water. So in terms of the city action, so what did the city do during this time? And this just covers August of two thousand twenty one through June of two thousand twenty three. We did implement our Level Two in, which is equivalent to a Stage Three in our municipal code. And that's something we're working on updating just to make sure the numbers match with the new state numbers. The two days a week watering were in place on an odd even schedule. And one thing we did do was actually came to council and provided additional funding into our rebate program for two new rebates. So that was very beneficial during that time. May and June of two thousand twenty three, we rescinded the water conservation levels and then city council did approve additional rebate funding for twenty three and twenty four in this current budget to just continue those programs that had been successful during the June or August to June two thousand twenty three. So messaging and outreach, I will admit, this is not my strongest suit. So I thank Christine and Chris and their team, RMG, who was an outside consultant in terms of helping develop the messaging, develop the materials that were presented. But a logo and tagline was developed, Folsom Saves, it's in our nature. It goes along with, you know, the city's current logo and, you know, the current saying for the city of Folsom. We did provide a citywide mailer to all customers, so not just residential, but non-residential as well. There were freeway signs, so the Palladio had information on their sign, but also the Auto Mall. And the numbers are about three hundred thousand or so motors today. Now, not all of them are going to be Folsom residents or customers, but we did hit a lot of people. Bimonthly newsletters, which gets to about thirty thousand residents and businesses. Weekly articles and tips. So the e-newsletter was included. Weekly social media posts, weekly ads in the Folsom Telegraph. We had utility bill inserts. Public service announcements. We had a dedicated Folsom Saves webpage and Waterwise workshops. So I think in terms of communication and outreach, our team used every outlet possible that they could and very thankful for, you know, the work that they did because this is not something I probably would have been able to accomplish trying to get the messaging out, but something that was easy to follow, easy to understand and relatable to somebody that's picking up either the article, the insert or the mailer itself. So it was very helpful to have our city team and then who they worked with outside the city to develop the messaging points for the city.
Marcus, I'm telling you, if you start those podcasts, they'll be highly listened to and watched.
Somebody once told me I had a face for radio, so. These are just a couple of snippets of some of the things that were developed as part of the campaign. So, you know, whether it was in the outlets themselves or on the freeway signs or in the social media posts, these were all different things just to try to get, you know, the customer's attention as best as we could. We really promoted our rebate programs because we felt that that was important because what we were doing, not only was that going to help the customer short term, but it also helps the city long term. So when you implement a water use efficiency program or a smart controller or a low-flow toilet, you know, you achieve those savings not only from the time you install, but over the lifespan of that infrastructure. So that was very important for us is, was to really promote those programs that we had. And before I get to questions, I have a couple more slides. Some information came into Councilmember Rorva just regarding orthophosphate and why we have that in our system. So I'll just show a couple of slides and then come back to this slide, but just I did not want to forget that. So what is orthophosphate? It's a food-grade additive basically used and allowed by the Environmental Protection Agency as a corrosion inhibitor and it's in the form of phosphorus. It forms a coating internally on the pipes and doesn't dissolve in water. And as I mentioned, this is something that is approved for the use in drinking water systems by the EPA and the U.S. Food and Drug Administration. It's not classified as environmentally hazardous. So what does adding orthophosphate do? Decreases the likelihood of copper pitting by adding orthophosphate in the treatment process. Now, you do want to strive to maintain, you know, the pH of about eight and a half. The city, when we did implement this back in October of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, sorry, we did start slowly with point one parts per million, then increased to two, point two, point three. These were all on the recommendation of our outside consultant team. And we have since left that and maintain the zero point three parts per million. And as I mentioned, this was a recommendation in order to minimize, as best as we could, the copper pinhole pitting that was occurring throughout the city. We did see a significant change and have seen a significant change since that time in terms of the number of occurrences, the number of calls that we have received. But more recently, that was brought to our attention is that this can have some impact on people that have pools. And it's not an infrastructure impact that's causing damage to the pool itself, but phosphorus is something that can be used by algae for food. So it is something that does feed with algae. And what I've learned in some of my reading and some of the information that was provided by this particular pool company and pool supplier is that while phosphorus is going to be in water systems, not necessarily water systems, but you will find it in pools because it comes from leaves, it comes from soil, different things that can fall and land in your pool. There is a balance that they try to maintain in terms of being able to treat without having any significant, maybe chemical impacts. And that's usually five hundred parts per billion to one thousand parts per billion. What we are adding is three hundred parts per billion. So when you combine the three hundred with what else might be naturally occurring, they may get to some pools that are greater than that five hundred parts per billion. It's manageable. It's by no means something that cannot be treated. But, you know, honestly, this is not one thing we knew about when we began adding orthophosphate to the system. Didn't hear about it till about a week ago and then a couple of days ago. So we're working with our outside consultant to see if. So we're working with our outside consultant to see if there's information we can gather. I know at some point we'll be talking to, you know, the pool company that brought this to our attention because they, you know, I don't dispute what they're having to do. I just, you know, physically don't know what that means. We do know, just in my reading and talking to our treatment plan operators, yeah, you may have to use more chlorine on an annual basis, which is a cost for customers. And then if you do have to add more algicide or something over the time period of, you know, different times of the year or once a year, you know, those are costs that unfortunately we didn't know about. And I'm glad it's brought to our attention so we can, you know, we might not be able to do anything about it because I would be concerned if we decided not to have orthophosphate in the system anymore, what that could mean. But maybe this is an opportunity to work with some of the pool suppliers or pool company testers and upkeep maintenance to maybe develop kind of a Q and A or forum that just helps maybe guide some some residents in the right direction if this is occurring at their house. And with that, I will go back and take any questions.
First, I want to say thank you. I'm gonna reply back to that gentleman, the pool maintenance owner and tell him he got his own slide today. So that's pretty fantastic. And thank you for being willing to talk to him in the future. It was a lot of good information. I know one of his concerns was, you know, he works throughout the region and Folsom was particularly different than El Dorado and the surrounding cities. So, but thank you for addressing that. Obviously, there's no harm to us. So that was good. Just seen more green pools this year, so. But could be filters too. Anyways, thank you for doing this whole thing. You know that I was pushing for this several times. And because of what I learned last year when I was campaigning, this was a huge concern. So, I mean, I think you alleviated, you answered quite a few questions I had ready to ask. But one of the things that I, and this is more of a marketing thing, you know, what was it, Folsom Saves? I love all the marketing that's done, all the advertising. I think it's a great message. But when you focus on something like Folsom Saves, well, then it makes people wonder, and I know this isn't you, but it makes people wonder, are we, are we in a drought? Are we in trouble? So I think that's where some of that's coming from. So maybe just think through, I'm not a marketing expert, but so it's something that you guys can think and maybe it'll be a way to appease or inform people that, yes, we want to keep being Folsom Waterwise. Or I'm far, I'm sorry, can't remember the logo now. But, but we're doing great. Folsom's doing great, kind of a message. And it would alleviate every campaign when people are talking about water as we get more and more houses down in South 50. Thank you for asking your questions, Sarah. That was a perfect question about South of 50. If we had it or not, we would still be in the same situation. So anyways, I just really appreciate you taking the time of putting this all together and really just forming the whole council in our city about what's going on.
Thank you.
Marcus, I know you mentioned to us before, we are working with the south of 50, the builders and planners and everybody. The water consumption there is significantly lower than the construction, the good old homes on this side. If we can, you know, add a little bit more, that way it helps everybody that we are already proactively taking some precautionary measures when our planning commission and city council approving the building permits.
Yes, so thanks for the question. Bless you. There, just by different laws that have been passed since 2012, essentially there's California Green Plumbing Code updates, there's the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance and just water-efficient items in general. The water use is lower in the plan area. Now, I don't have a percentage of what that is, but I would venture to guess it's probably at least 20%, maybe 30% lower than what a maybe comparable house is on the north side of Highway 50. And a lot of that is the landscaping side, the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, which really limits the amount of water that can be used outdoors on new properties. One thing that factors into this as well is a lot of the homes, I shouldn't say a lot, but I would say a majority of homes in the plan area don't have maybe all the landscaping done in the backyards either. So there will be some time that you might see some stuff pop up over the years. But still, in terms of overall size, they will be less than what you might find north of Highway 50, except for some of the newer homes in areas that are built post-2015, just because of some of those new laws and just, you know, how efficient a new home can be built now, not only on the water side, but on the energy side as well.
Yeah, thank you. And I lost my train of thought. But I can definitely, you know, thank the Folsom residents every time, you know, our town reacted so positive and be part of when the 2015, 2020, that drought season announcement, you know, went out. I want to sincerely thank, you know, each and every Folsom residents slowed down the, you know, base stage of water and using more spare. And those are not City of Folsom restrictions and regulations. They are coming from the state. I just want to reemphasize those words. Thank you. It's a great presentation. And I was asking before, you know, so many questions to Marcus when I joined on this council in, you know, early 2001 and so, because it is concerned, you know, in our community. It is, it is, because not many people know that today's, you know, consumption of water, watering your lands only two days, they think it is City of Folsom. So we just want to emphasize that one. And the other, you know, wonderful thing which is going to come in another month or so is a Folsom water vision. You know, that's going to help City of Folsom despite whatever is going on in our region. How do we, as a city of Folsom, prepare more, you know, water-tolerant city? Despite whatever the challenges we are going to face and redundancies and all those. I'm really looking forward for our water vision plan. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to add that at folsom.ca.us/water, you can find a page that's specifically devoted to water as it relates to development. So, and, you know, I find that helpful when people are asking me questions like, why are you building homes, you know, with the water situation? And it kind of answers all those questions and sums up a lot of the points Marcus made.
When people have questions, I refer them to that document. Sarah, any comments, questions?
Marcus, I, every, from the years that I sat in that chamber until I've sat on this council and you give us your annual presentation on water, it's one of the most interesting. It's one of the ones that I think most of us get the most questions on. And so there are a couple of slides in here that I will definitely use to be able to share with residents when it comes to the concern of why are we building when we continue to have these shortages? And so this presentation just gives it very clear. And I think it just gives us the confidence and gives our residents the confidence that we have water, even for the complete full build-out. So thank you for your presentation again.
Thank you.
Okay. Your next item is the consent calendar, and you have a request from the public to pull item number eight. Okay.
And I'd like to pull item number six also, please.
And I'm going to pull item number nine.
So I can move adoption of items two, three, four, five, and seven.
A second on that.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Roarbaugh, Aquino,
Yes.
Chalamchela,
Yes.
and Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, your first pulled item is item number six. This is resolution number 11079. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement with Golden Bay Fence plus Iron Works for the Folsom Zoo Perimeter Fence Project and appropriation of funds.
And I'll just pull this because there has been quite a bit of commentary on social media. So I don't know if Kelly or Brad or Jocelyn wants to take this, but.
Brad's gonna come on up.
Okay. Let me just preface this by saying that I've been very pleased with staff's efforts on this. I think from when the council was notified that this was, a new fence was needed and that we set aside the ARPA money. It feels like you guys jumped right on it and did a really good job in maybe modifying the design or whatever to bring it down into the available funds. So thank you for that. But just, just for, you know, clarity with the general public. So the zoo is inspected every year by the United States Department of Agriculture. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have we ever not passed an inspection?
There may have been minor, Jocelyn could probably answer it, but they have been minor things to fix, but nothing related to the fence.
Okay.
So the fence requirement came into play in 2000. So the zoo was built in, in 1960, or opened in 1963. Over the years, it grew in size and probably the largest chunk of the growth was in 2017 when we added 1.7 acres, when we added the barn in the, that area over there. So that fence around the barn met the requirements. So the rest of the fence throughout the years, some of it may have been eight feet, some of it may have been six feet. And then what was eight feet at one time with the, just with the dirt and the leaves from the, from the trees and everything kind of piling up, so that, that grade, the finished grade raises. And then we're no longer at eight feet. In addition, the barbed wire at the top over the years has had trees fall on it. We've had some trespassers in the zoo and it's, that's why it doesn't meet the eight-foot requirement.
And we just learned that it doesn't meet it last year?
So the, even though the requirement was in place in 2000, we had never been, there was never a perimeter inspection that evaluated our fence. So we had never been notified that our fence was. But we knew that the new requirement was to make it eight feet.
Okay, okay. And, I mean, I don't know about the rest of you, but at my house, the projects far outweigh the available funds. And so I imagine it's the same way with the zoo, right? Okay, so Jocelyn, have we ever had an animal escape the zoo? No. So, okay, so like I said, I, maybe it was just the way the article that was written, but it, this seemed to be, generated a lot of controversy online and I thought, what's the problem? We were told we needed a fence, we're getting a new fence and no animals are gonna be, you know, ejected from the zoo as somebody asserted, and the zoo is not going to close. We are taking care of this. And so I don't have any further questions. Okay, then I will happily move adoption number, resolution number 11079. And again, thanks to you, Brad and Kelly and Jocelyn, and I know Lorraine was a big part of this. So thank you for jumping on this.
Thank you.
I'll second on that.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Roarbaugh,
Yes.
Aquino,
Yes.
Chalamchela,
Yes.
and Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, your second item to pull from the consent calendar is item number eight, resolution number 11081. This is a resolution accepting the grant award from the Regional Active Transportation Program for the Folsom Placerville Rail Trail Gap Closure Project and appropriation of funds. This was pulled at the request of Speaker Max Hofstadt.
Okay, and actually I wanted to pull this one too. So if I could just start by asking a couple of questions. I do think this warrants a little bit of scrutiny just because of the timeline. So if I'm reading this correctly, the first grant that we received for this rail trail was awarded in December of 2015. And it was in March of 2016 that we accepted the grant. A year later, we awarded a contract to Kimley Horn for the design, only for 30% of the design as to 100, as opposed to 100%, which I don't really understand because I thought the grant was for all of the design and the construction. And then it looks like, if I understand this correctly, this item on today's agenda is to accept another grant that I hope will fund the entire design and construction. But, you know, this is eight years, and I know we had a pandemic in 2020, but I'm just wondering what happened between 2015 and 2020 that this has taken so long to get off the ground?
Okay. Brad Nelson, Park Plan Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll give you just kind of a fairly high-level timeline of everything. So this was me doing some research. Our senior trails planner isn't available this evening. So I was pulling information from, actually from city council reports over the years. So our previous senior trails planner, Jim Knopka, retired in 2018. Our current senior trails planner, Brett Bollinger, as I mentioned, isn't available tonight. So the original trail project started at the Humboldt Willow Creek Trail back behind Mercy Hospital, and it extended to Scholar Way. So that was about a mile. In December 2015, SECOG approved the grant application for about a million dollars, a little over a million. In March, as you mentioned, 2016, city council approved the grant award. In December 2016, the RFP was issued for preliminary engineering and design, which was a 30% design up to, for the design for the trail, only up to Scholar Way. So I'm not sure what the intention was. It didn't use all that $1 million originally. I think the intent was to determine if this was the project that we actually wanted. So in March of 2017, then the project was awarded to Kimley Horn. So between 2017 and 2022, just as an aside, there was a lot of, we only have one senior trails planner. There was a lot of fairly high-profile projects that he was working on. Johnny Crash Trail Phase Two, there was the Robbers Ravine Bridge, the Lake Natoma Waterfront Project and Folsom Boulevard Undercrossing. Also between 2017 and 2022, the Folsom Placerville Rail Trail, the project we're discussing tonight, also changed. So it changed in scope. The project doubled in size, so the trail extended from Scholar Way all the way down to Iron Point Road. There was also some unanticipated environmental studies that Caltrans was requiring from us. Cultural resources, historical resources and biological resources. Those were not originally anticipated to the, to the depth of study that was required by Caltrans. And then associated with those changes, there was a contract amendment for Kimley Horn to accommodate all those changes. So the agenda item for tonight is to finish the design, so to take it from the 30% to the 100%. And that also, we're including the Highway 50 undercrossing, the design for that is part of that. So that's on the old Placerville Road. So that will extend the Class 1 trail all the way down into the Folsom Plan Area, which we feel is a very important connection. The grant funding will fund the construction for the project all the way down to Iron Point Road. And then, once the design is finished, we'll have an understanding whether or not the, that funding will cover that Highway 50 undercrossing as well. So it'll include the design, the finish of the design to Iron Point Road, including the undercrossing at Highway 50. And we have construction for the trail from Humboldt Willow Creek all the way down to Iron Point Road. The little bit of unknown is the construction funding for the undercrossing.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that history and definitely don't want to shoot the messenger because I know you're filling in tonight, so thank you. But I know the wheels of government tend to work a little slower than, than things do in the private sector, but this is moving at a glacial pace. And so if we could just make sure, please, to really keep our eye on this and let's get this thing done. This is an important part, you know, I think connecting to Folsom Lake College, at the Palladio, et cetera. And it's just like, let's just, let's hammer this thing out and get it done because, you know, eight years is too long.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, you do have one request to speak on this item from Max Hofstadt. Come on down.
Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Is the mic on?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Max Hofstadt. I'm a senior at Folsom High School. I'm an active bike commuter and a youth board member of Friends of Folsom Parkway. I'm in full support of this agenda item as this trail would help this part of Folsom become more navigable as a cyclist or pedestrian. Currently, Bidwell is quite inhospitable. The speed limit is high and the bike lanes are narrow. I know this as a commuter because I purposefully avoid this road when I go to Sutter Street from Folsom Ranch. Instead, I prefer to take Iron Point and then a trail that parallels Folsom Boulevard. Unfortunately, this route is very out of the way and it shows how there aren't any good alternatives to Bidwell. To test my luck, I did take Bidwell on my way here, and I can confirm that a trail is definitely necessary. I would not be surprised if we see a cyclist injury or fatality given the lack of a trail. The proposed connection is the perfect links to South of 50, along with improvements that hopefully are underway at Placerville Road. I'd like to thank Councilmember Aquino for your work connecting the trail under the freeway. I cross Highway 50 regularly, and it is such a needless barrier in an otherwise great trail. We have just a small stretch of unpaved dirt and gravel, which is problematic for commuters and isolates Folsom Ranch residents from the rest of this. On behalf of cyclists riding in the area and the Friends of Folsom Parkway, I encourage your support for this very important trail segment. your support for this very important trail segment and urge your support for item number eight.
Thank you, Max. And can I just, I, can I just commend you for coming here and share, being a voice of youth who are expressing an interest in ensuring that we put a priority on paths, bike paths that are important to our residents?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I second that. I know, it is. We need more, encourage your friends to come and share your thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I will move adoption of resolution 11081.
I second that.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, your next consent calendar item to be pulled is item number nine. This is resolution number 11083, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for design consulting services with M. Neil's Engineering for an electric vehicle charging system at the corp yard.
Thank you, Krista. What details? Reading it very detailed. My question is more, Elaine, I know we, we are just adopting the procurement process, enhanced procurement process. I'll certainly see, you know, this might have started, you know, much earlier than we are adapting. I, I want to request, you know, when we are preparing this kind of evaluations, we need a little bit more details. I, I'm not going to oppose this one, but we have to set some time. When somebody reads this one, this is not giving enough information. What is that steady solutions cost, proposed cost? We don't know. Even though it is a, the total score of evaluation is very low, it's only 35 points out of 100, I believe, but we can't break down that one. So the new process is coming. Elaine is going to drive that one among our city. Please, you know, bring us more meat, that way it is helpful, not only for five of us. Anybody reading this one, it is more meaningful when we are making the resolutions and approving. It's just a comment, it's not anything else. Maybe, you know, from September to see whether, you know, whether we can tighten this one. Otherwise, I know sometimes we get, we are running out of time, you know, all those things, grant is going to expire. Please help us to help you. That's all I can say. So come with the more details from September and onwards. With that, if my colleagues doesn't have any questions on that, I'm going to make this resolution 1108 to pass. 11083.
I'll second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
Okay, that takes you to your first public hearing of the night. This is item number 10, resolution number 11078, a resolution approving and confirming the report of delinquent utilities charges and requesting Sacramento County to collect such charges on the tax rule.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Councilmembers, I'm Elizabeth Hannah, the Revenue Services Supervisor. So before you is resolution 11078, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom approving and confirming the report of delinquent utility charges and requesting Sacramento County to collect such charges on the tax rule. So I'll give you a brief overview of this item. The city provides various utilities, services to approximately 26,000 properties throughout the city, including water, sewer and garbage services. The Revenue Division bills and collects approximately $45.5 million annually in utility charges. While the vast majority of our accounts throughout the city are current, there are some accounts that are more than 60 days delinquent with delinquent balances of $500 or greater. These accounts are appropriate for transfer to the county tax rule for collection. So the report you are approving tonight, it lists 136 active accounts for a total of $336,250.36. These accounts are more than 60 days delinquent. Each owner receives monthly bills and if they're delinquent, monthly delinquent notices. An intent lien was mailed to the property owners on July 22nd, which included a deadline to dispute any charges. Additionally, public hearing notices were published on July 6th and July 13th. So with this item, I am recommending that you adopt resolution 11078, requesting the county auditor to transfer these delinquent amounts to the property tax rule for collection with annual property taxes. I am adding in that I will be removing parcel 0721050050000 in the amount of $2,137.13 for setting up a $500 payment, a month payment plan just prior to this meeting. So I am happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Liz?
So, once you transfer this to the county, their balance resets to zero with the city?
Uh, not zero, but usually it'll be about whatever the last two or three months bills because we noticed them a month ago for what was 60 days delinquent. So there will be a small balance left on their account.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Liz, I forgot to ask this one last time. If, for example, a resident has a $2,000 property tax, we are adding $200 delinquent to the property tax. Is the resident has an option, only pay $2,000, not $200?
It's part of their property tax bill. So it'll split that in half to be due in December and April. So, you know, $100 of that portion will go in December and $100 of that portion will go in April.
Got it. And maybe down the road, like a year or from now, so we are going to collect that 334K, whatever that amount is.
Yes, the prop, uh, the county pays us in two installments from the property taxes. I want to say it's March or April and then June following. And then anything that's uncollected goes to the teeter plan and we get the following December, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. And on a, a compliment note, thank you for answering that. 45 millions we are collecting, that's a lot of work on you and your team. Because we want to make sure, I know we were talking to Senator Roger Neelos, you know, earlier today, the service we are providing to attract more people, more businesses. That's, that's an awesome thing. Thank you again for picking up and it is less than 1% delinquents. And I did ask, you know, how you remind them and put them reminders in multiple ways. I want to call out to you and your leadership and your team members for doing outstanding job. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions for Liz, we will open up the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
You have no request to speak under this public hearing.
Okay, so we will now close the public hearing. And are there any other questions or comments?
I'll move adoption of resolution number 11078.
I second on that one.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
Will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your next public hearing item this evening is item number 11. This is resolution number 11082. This is a resolution approving the final engineer's report for the L and L districts that are listed on the agenda. I'm not going to read them all unless you want to, Zach.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to present to you resolution number 11082, a resolution approving the final engineer's report for the following landscaping and lighting districts for fiscal year 2022, or 2023, 2024. The districts are American River Canyon North, American River Canyon North Number Two, American River Canyon North Number Three, Blue Ravine Oaks, Blue Ravine Oaks Number Two, Briggs Ranch, Broadstone, Broadstone Number Four, Broadstone Unit Number Three, Cobble Ridge, Cobble Hills Ridge Two, Reflections Two, Folsom Heights, Folsom Heights Number Two, Hannaford Cross, Lake Natoma Shores, Los Saros, Natoma Station, Natoma Valley, Prairie Oaks Ranch, Prairie Oaks Ranch Number Two, Prospect Ridge, Sierra Estates, Silverbrook, Steeplechase, the residences at American River Canyon, the residences at American River Canyon Number Two, Willow Creek Estates East, Willow Creek Estates East Number Two, and Willow Creek Estates South and Will Springs.
I didn't catch that. Could you please repeat it?
I know. I'm about to ask that too. Thank you.
Yeah. So generally speaking, very similar to previous years' reports, we have 30 landscaping and lighting districts in the city of Folsom. No new districts were formed this year. So all of, all of the districts were accounted for in the single report. No significant changes or no changes at all between the prelim that was approved by the council on the June 25th meeting. So the assessments are the same, the services proposed are the same. Couple notable projects we're going to be doing this year, we're going to be doing some landscape renovations in the American River Canyon North neighborhood. That's one area that was impacted by some of the drought restrictions that Marcus talked about. So we're going to be converting some turf over there, as well as a larger re-landscape project in the Prairie Oaks Ranch neighborhood. They recently passed an overlay district and some of the work we're going to be doing there is pursuant to the new funding that they've established in their neighborhood. And that's, that's pretty much my summary for the report.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions or comments for Zach?
I, I just want to make a comment and I want to thank you, Zach. I feel like I'm always emailing and asking, you know, is this an L and L district or is this park or city of Folsom, whatever, and you're extremely responsive. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, you got to open the public hearing.
Okay, well, I will open now the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
You have no request to speak under this public hearing.
Okay, so we will now close the public hearing. Are there any, any additional comments, questions?
It's, it's a comment only. I think, Jack, I know I did discuss with you, but just for the public, I know, purpose, I'm just going to repeat this one. South of 50 is, you know, keep growing and we, this L and L is only covering this side because of the various funding mechanism. And I know I requested city manager just to take a look at how residents can involve and participate in a similar manner, take ownership and involve and accountability wise, whatever the work is happening there, you can be the eyes and ears of our city team. So very soon, I think we are going to think about something which is going to work, like the same way L and L is working on this side of the town. So I just want to make that comment to public. Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Elaine, for, you know, going to look into that one.
So Vice Mayor Chalamchela, just, just to let you know, even without, well, they do have CFDs, but even without formal representation, they are letting at least me know when there's an issue. So for example, a resident contacted me last week about some overgrown weeds in, in kind of the, the opposite side of the Prospector Park. And I contacted Zach and he let me know that that area will be built out and landscaped when Prospector Park is done. And then another resident reached out about trash behind her neighborhood and kind of an open space area. So they're reaching out. Don't, we got eyes and ears over there for sure.
Thank you again for those who are reaching out to our council team here, but, you know, putting these reps, you know, empowering, you know, more eyes and, you know, ears, that's all. Thank you.
I'll move adoption of resolution 11082.
I second on that one.
Councilmembers Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, your last discussion item this evening is new business, item number 12. This is consideration of establishment of a community priorities advisory committee and direction to staff.
Thank you. This item is a follow-up actually from Mayor Rodriguez, who made a request from your standing item on the agenda for future agenda items to talk about the establishment of a community priorities advisory committee and get the council to weigh in on whether that's something you want to establish and if so, what the parameters would be. So I'm just bringing that back. The reason you'd have a community priorities advisory committee is, as you likely know because you've lived through it, and this, me and Stacy and our team have made multiple presentations to the city council over the last couple of years about expected structural deficits in the future. Those have been at regular city council meetings, special workshops, strategic planning discussions and budget presentations. And we've shown you over and over again the projected deficits over the next five fiscal years, beginning in fiscal year 24, 25. And just for clarity for members of the public who may be wondering, when we're talking about the general fund, the major kind of outward facing departments that are funded by the general fund are the Community Development Department, the Fire Department, the Library Department, the Police Department, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Public Works Department. There are other departments that receive their funds from the general fund, but they're more sort of internally focused. Thank you, Marcus. I wanted to add that we did a lot of work to conduct both qualitative and quantitative community outreach and surveying throughout the city to help inform our residents about those structural deficits and to gauge their priorities. And we shared that data back to the city council. We have also shared with the city council and with our community that those projected structural deficits are due primarily due to a change in the predictable historical pattern we've had of our sales tax revenue. Our rate of growth has declined and kind of been bounced off its trajectory in the wrong direction. And that paired with rising costs, including employee compensation and benefits, makes for quite a big challenge for us fiscally. As I said, the mayor did ask that we bring this item back to discuss if the council's interested in having a community committee to help provide meaningful input and recommendations as the city council moves forward to try to close those general fund gaps. So the purpose of the committee, and this is, this is just me providing some suggested structure, if it's something you would want to do, would be to provide recommendations related to major general fund funded programs and services in the context of declining revenue growth, rising costs and projected structural deficits. More specifically, this committee would work to identify priorities for services that are primarily funded by the general fund and they would recommend near-term reductions, deferrals or even eliminations of, elimination of general fund services. And they would also, if they had any, provide recommendations for new potential general fund revenue sources. As I kind of envision it, but really could be whatever the council thinks, it would ideally include about 15 members because that feels like a manageable size for a group like this. About half of the members would be at-large members and the other half would be representing focus area stakeholder groups. And we would ask those organizations to name who on their, within their group, they would like to serve. And I was envisioning that those stakeholder groups would be those that, you know, work in or work in areas or serve in areas that are most impacted by the general fund. And I just listed off a few examples here. This is by no means an exclusive list. Next slide. In terms of serving on the committee as an at-large member, we would have a correlating application process that we'd advertise across all of our communications platforms. And then just similarly to how you've handled the River District Master Plan Committee or other ad hocs, you would have a very transparent public process here at city council where you would receive the applications in your packet and you would vote as to who you want to be on, serving on the committee. Once the committee was established, those meetings would be open to the public. I was envisioning they would meet twice a month for five months for a total of about 10 meetings. Could be early in the morning to help people who are, who are working day jobs, maybe 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and, you know, a couple, a couple of days each month. The committee should select from amongst their ranks a chair, a vice chair and a secretary at their first meeting and also agree to some ground rules. I would work with the chair to help frame meeting agendas and provide correlating materials and speakers. In general terms, it's expected that at the beginning, this group really needs to do a deep dive, as you have done already, into the city's finances and really get a download as to our situation and what the next five years look like. And then from there, they would hear directly from the department heads of the major general fund departments that are affected. And those department heads can speak from their experience about their department's operations, funding sources, staffing and service levels and, and concerns that are related to funding. I would recommend that the committee ideally be assisted by a professional facilitator. This has been the approach in other cities. I would also recommend that the committee have access to smart technology. There are lots of apps and other software programs that allow real-time voting and budget prioritization. And I would recommend that the, the committee would emerge with a final report with recommendations after meeting for those five months, within six months of their establishment. And they would transmit a report to me that would then in turn be transmitted to the city council at a, a regular city council meeting. As far as financial impact, I want to point out that the current adopted fiscal year 23, 24 budget does not contemplate any expenditures for a committee, including a facilitator or these budget priority balancing platforms, app platforms. We have seen that other cities with similar committees have dedicated up to $150,000 for efforts like this one. And if the city council does indeed desire to put funds toward the support of the committee, I will need to work with our CFO to reprioritize expenditures to figure out a funding source. And then just finally, Mayor, I recommend that city council provide direction to me as to the possible formation of a community priorities advisory committee to assess services and programs funded by the city's general fund and recommend prioritization as to what Folsom values most as a community. And I just, I'm looking for direction from the council, ideally in the form of a motion as to what you would like to do with regard to this committee.
Can we go back one slide?
Yeah.
$150,000 for what would be eight meetings, you said?
Ten meetings.
Eight, ten, 10 meetings.
Plus putting, helping frame a report and a presentation.
Seems extremely excessive.
Yeah, I'm only reporting. Yeah, I'm only reporting what other cities have done. It, you know, you can say it's excessive, and that's fair, but cities have spent, you know, easily $50,000, $75,000, $90,000 on just the consultant alone. Again, this is someone that's guiding a group of people who are working on a very challenging issue. And then, they're also putting money toward this smart technology, which can, you know, range from a variety of options, you know, $5,000, $10,000, $15,000. So, it's up to $150,000, but I'm just saying, we've budgeted no cost. And I will add that this would be, I'll just be really blunt, this would be extraordinarily time-consuming for the staff involved, and which is, which is fine, but that's why it's important to discuss it here as a city council, because it would be something that I would be working on probably near daily, the CFO as well, certainly all the key department heads, making sure this committee has the right information and needs to make good decisions.
So, we have spent, I'm just going back a couple of years now, where we've had several presentations, even some of the most recent ones. Why would we need to reinvent the wheel and create new presentations when we have so many of those slides already that were incorporated into, you know, the, I think, the, in January, the mid-year budget? I mean, that had a wealth of information. Going into January, February, we looked at budget presentations that, that information's already ready for us to be able to utilize if we create this.
Yeah. That's frankly the easy part, because we do, we have worked so hard to educate the council and our community, and we can, you know, update that. Does take some, a little bit of time to make sure that we're very current on our information. And yes, we can repeat all that, but the hard part gets into, you know, the charge of this group is, okay, what do, what do we want to prioritize? And given that, what is the math that makes the budget balance? So, because we can't have, we can't have a budget that's in deficit. You know, when, when you adopt a budget, it has to be balanced. And there's, you've seen those gaps, and they're, and they grow. So, the hard part is doing the work of like, okay, you have, this is, this is the gap. These are your priorities. And then, the committee will start saying, well, what would it look like if we did, you know, more of this and less of that? And, and then it started, then that's a lot of work on the part of the finance director and the department heads in terms of those calculations and saying, this is what it would look like, this is, this is how, this is helped, this is how this is hurt. That's a process. The download is just really educating what, what we've already been doing with the council and the community.
And I imagine we'll be using polls that we have obtained from the past year that already show what our community considers a priority.
Yeah, our community values parks and trails and public safety at the top. And honestly, our community prioritizes the whole balance, the whole magic formula, you know. But at the top are public safety, parks and trails. So, they don't think they need to spend a whole lot of time dwelling on that. But when you start getting down to realistically, okay, those are the priorities, so what does that mean for everything else? Those are real dollars, real services, real people, real calculations, and that takes thoughtful time.
In the past few years, we've had a couple of ad hoc committees. One of them was on the historic district, oh, what was it, historic district?
Ad hoc parking solutions.
Ad hoc parking, okay. How much money was spent on that particular ad hoc committee? Because that one met for 12 months, and there was a facilitator.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
Does anybody remember?
Do you recall the numbers on, I don't have that right off the top of my head, but we could get that for you.
I can grab it for you tonight.
Okay, oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, we did have a professional facilitator. And I'm not saying that that's, you know, I'm not saying that that's 100% necessary. I'm just trying to point out that other cities that have done this have used smart technology and had professional facilitators, facilitators, because it's a heavy lift.
So, just for the sake of, I'm not quite sure I understand what smart technology does. So, this is a program that we will purchase at a cost of about-ish $15,000?
Maybe $5,000, $10,000. You know, I don't know if Christine wants to comment on it, but there are, there are these app-based platforms where real-time you can, for example, kind of look at the general fund and say, I don't want to start calling out examples, because every, you know, everyone worries, you know. But if, if, if the committee starts saying, well, gosh, we see this gap, we would like you to stop doing this, then real-time we can use the app to plug in the information and say, we're taking that away. And then, they see the rebalancing, and they see how close they get to that gap being closed. And so, and then they, they also can, you know, vote as to who prefers which. And then, they can say, well, wait a minute, no, we don't want to take the whole thing away. What happens if we just only offered it on Tuesdays and Thursdays? And so, again, we're recalculating, and then we're plugging in the information, and they can just see how close they're getting to the goal of closing the gap, which is what it is.
So, this ad hoc committee is going to look at, I mean, we definitely have projected shortfalls that are coming 24, 25. And so, this committee will, will look at, I mean, but basically, look at a lot of things that we have already looked at. I just don't, I, one of the conversations I have with a lot of people, and it seems like I've had it so much in the last month, has been, at some point, if we, I mean, we tightened up where we can. We didn't spend on things that we really needed in the city. And so, at some point, if we don't make, if we continue to see that this projected shortfall is going to come true, is going to, you know, is going to come true, and we're going to encounter this, the question's going to be is what, what are we saying no to at that point? And is that what this committee will also be looking at, is, is in the event that we don't do anything? And in 24, 25, we begin to see that our budget is, that we're, that we have more expenses than we have revenue, hard decisions will need to be made.
Yes.
This committee will look at those hard decisions that will need to be made, which not, which we may not, I mean, we as a council.
Yeah, these are just.
They're going to make recommendations.
These are just recommendations. Yeah, you are ultimately the policy-setting body. But the way that other jurisdictions have utilized a committee like this one is, yes, they have taken a look and said, we see the gaps, we represent your community, we represent your stakeholder groups, and we have thoughtfully looked at this. We've listened to all your department heads, we've listened to your CFO, we've, you know, we've gotten very familiar with the numbers, and we think your cuts ought to be here, because the structural deficit will come. I think I've been talking about it almost since I became city manager. So, it, they will say, yeah, this is, it's hard, but this, we, we looked at everything, and this is the combination of things that we would recommend would, would close that gap. Or, and/or, they might say, I don't think anybody's really looked at this potential revenue source that would be a consistent, ongoing contributor to the general fund, and we want to include in our report that we recommend that you pursue that. So, that, to me, would be the charge of it, but that's why I'm bringing it at your request, because I really would like the council to react to this.
I, just my personal, just my personal assessment is, I think $150,000 is way excessive for what we're doing. We're, we're basically bringing community members together. We're going to be looking at our budget, our current state. We're looking to look at the future state. We're going to look at, you know, potentially, in the event we have shortfalls, what, what are you guys recommending that we cut? You know, is it going to come in, in the form of parks and rec? Is it going to come in the form of public safety? Is it going to, I mean, those are things that they will look at, and they'll make recommendations. But I just think $150,000 is.
Yeah, I'm not, to be clear, I'm not saying that it would, I'm saying other cities have spent up to $150,000, so.
What is the least a city has spent on, on creating this community advisory committee that looked at our budget and that, you know, provided some form of recommendation at the end of the?
I don't know what the least is, but they all seem to have put money toward a facilitator and apps. So, you know, I don't know, like, if, if you name a number, you know, we would obviously stay within that budget. And no, I wouldn't recommend spending $150,000. I just really wanted to state that other cities did that. And we are, so, those are, those are tools that other cities have depended on for a committee like this.
Mayor, I did find the number for the ad hoc committee for the parking solutions in the historic district. We spent $59,000 for Kearns and West. And as the city manager identified, they facilitated 12 meetings, helped that group organize themselves with chair, vice chair rules.
I remember.
And then summarized and reported out, brought information together by working with the city staff, and then created that report at the end. So, that was what they did for that amount.
For $60,000?
Yeah, $59,000.
Fifty, so, so in those $59,000, I mean, I, I attended those meetings, and they were long, elaborate. There was, I remember the consultant. And I would think that's the ballpark, that it would cost to do 10 meetings in a, in a period of, I don't know, four or five months.
You did, yeah, 10 meetings, and you had your report writing. I mean, that, that Parking Solutions Group was a couple of years ago. So, say you spend 60, 70,000 on the consultant, somewhere in that ballpark. And then, you need to decide if you want to have, you know, smart technology that you're using to help the committee do their work. And so, you know, it's kind of what I was saying, like, 67,000, 70,000, and another 5, 10,000 for these smart tools.
Are, are these smart tools, is this something that we will be able to use at another point down the road?
They're usually annual subscriptions. So, yeah, I mean, well, this is work that the council's going to have to do. And so, you know, yes, ideally, we would be purchasing some type of app that we could share with our community, that we can share with the city council, but it would probably be an annual cost.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think just based on, just even, I think 75,000, you know, not to exceed 75,000 is probably within the budget of getting a consultant, 10, 10 meetings, you know, if, if we decide to purchase this app. I, I think that sounds like in a reasonable sense. I think this is an incredibly important process of where we are, to be able to get community input, to be able to really understand what it is that we're, we're about to encounter. We're going to encounter some really hard questions, and those conversations are going to probably come a lot sooner than later. And, and, and so, I think getting ahead of this by having residents really delve down into our budget is, is critical. But I, I, I mean, I just think 75,000 is probably the max that I think would, it would take to do this. But again, I don't know, I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert.
And like I said, whatever, if the, you know, I think there's just, there's two components here. First of all, does a consensus of this council want to have a committee like this at this time? And secondly, you know, what are the parameters? And if there, if there is a desire to spend any money on it, obviously, we would live, live within those means, whatever that looks like. It is not budgeted, and so, we would have to push this, push other priorities down.
So, Madam Mayor, I think you correctly pointed out that we have had some pretty comprehensive presentations about the budget the last couple of years. And you also pointed out that we did pay a consultant already to do a community survey, and I think we got back at least a few, maybe several hundred responses. I'm not exactly sure of the correct number. But I, I think that begs the question, do we need to spend 50, 60, $75,000, whatever it is, and significant staff time to learn what we already know?
I believe that we are in a, I believe that public feedback at this point is critical to, to, to get engagement from the public, because those.
Wasn't that the point of the survey? I mean, and not to, not to, you know, discount the, the groups that were suggested there, but we already got feedback from hundreds of residents. Why would we prioritize the feedback from 15 or 20 over those hundreds of residents that we already got their feedback?
Are you talking about polls, priorities? Well, we already, I mean, those, it wasn't a surprise to us. You know, people value their public safety.
Yeah.
People, this is a safe city. People feel safe. People want us to protect that. People love their parks. They want us to ensure that we protect their parks. You know, I, I think that this process is critical in terms of the whole entire process of where we are going to be. And at some point in the next six months, the question is going to be, if we don't have enough money, if we don't have enough revenue coming in for expenses, what is, what is, what are the, what are the alternatives?
Wouldn't we just cut whatever was the lowest priority in the poll?
Or from the council. That's what we're elected to do.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I'm happy to hear public comment, but to me, it's like, we're going to learn what we already know. So, I'm not, I'm not really sure what the purpose is.
Yeah, I think based off what other cities have done, they have created community advisory committees. I think that has been an important part of their process of what they've done to ensure that community feedback, or to ensure that, you know, residents are engaged. I think we all talk about our constituents and what is important to them. I think this is an incredible part of the process. That's just what I, I think. I think we're, at some point down the road, the question's going to be is, City of Folsom, what are we going to do? Yes, we are policymakers. Yes, we are going to be answering those questions. But I think to be able to get the feedback and spend a little money to, to have all of this presented to residents who have an interest in it, I think it's, it's, I think it's going to be a part of the.
But, but that's my point. We've already spent money to get feedback from residents. Why do we need to do it again? What, what are we going to learn that we don't already know? That's my question.
I think the outcome is going to be is, what are we going to do long-term? We have, we created, we created this strategic plan. We have five very important goals that we said, we know, we know the PD needs to expand. We know we need more police officers on the floor. We know that we have all these. We don't have, we don't have, we're not going to have the money to do that. And, and so, I, in my opinion, just based off what I have seen in other cities, to be able to achieve their outcome of, of what are we going to do long-term? Are we going to implement a sales tax? Are we going to not do anything? And then, in a couple, in about a year and a half, decide, okay, we've got cuts to do, and those cuts are going to come where? And you're, and are you saying that the polls that were taken as far as community importance are going to come from the, whatever fell at the bottom end of that poll, or whatever?
Yeah, I would think so. Public safety is priority number one, so that would be the last thing you would ever cut. Parks and Recreation was number two, I think. That would be the last thing you would cut. So, but.
Then you're looking at library, so then, except us decide library cuts?
I don't remember what exactly what it was, but.
I, I just think that, that question, that, the polls did not answer those questions in terms of what do we cut? Do we then cut library hours, or do we then look at cutting, I mean, I can't imagine what in Public Works, or, I, I don't, I just think it's, I think this is a time that we should be asking our residents, that's very clear questions, is in the event that we don't have the revenue that we need to be able to operate the city, what are we looking at as far as cutting? And so, that, I, I don't think the polls answered that. I think the polls gave us a priority level, but it didn't, it didn't say, in the event we don't have any more money to operate the city, what's going to get cut?
Okay, so why can't we just ask that at a council meeting, put it as part of an agenda during the budget? Why does it have to involve a paid consultant and hundreds of hours of staff time?
Well, I don't see where you're getting the hundreds of hours of staff time. And we already have a lot of the presentations. We already have the, I mean, we have information that we, we have that information. I, I don't, I, I'm not quite clear on where the hundreds of hours of staff time is going to come from.
Because, because if this plays out the way that you think it's going to, a committee member is going to say, well, I'd like to know a little bit more about police overtime, or I'd like to know about this. And then, our staff is going to have to go research that and bring it back to them.
And is that information that we don't have, that they can't put together into the slide?
I don't know, because they can't predict exactly what they're going to ask.
We, we, I mean, of course, you know, all of these, it's, it's almost, I see it almost as like a mini budget process, that yes, questions, I think Councilmember Kino's right on, that inevitably, I mean, if I were serving on the committee, those would be the questions. I would be like, what happens, all due respect, Mr. Gornison, you know, like, what happens if you only have the library open on Wednesdays? How much does that save? Do we have that at our fingertips? No. So, then, Ms. Tumani works with Mr. Gornison to start crunching those numbers, and, oh, okay, and if we're not open on those days, what is that sacrificed by way of, you know, revenue? What, what happens here? And all that, and then come back and say, okay, here's your answer on that. Okay, well, it seems like the firefighters have, you know, a lot of overtime. What, what would happen if we, you know, improved overtime? Well, you know, now we crunch with the fire chief, and what? So, it's like, everything is just, is additional research, just the same way we would provide to the city council. You are absolutely right, Mayor Rodriguez. We have done the work on, on telling the story of need 100,000%, I believe. And we've been dedicated to it, you know, for, for a very long time now. Now, the part comes, it's coming. And, and now, it comes to getting specific calculations of what happens when you, you know, push over here and it pushes out over there. And, and that, that does take a lot of time. I mean, I, you know, Stacy, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I, I feel like this is, this would be, it would take a lot of time to crunch those numbers.
To crunch numbers if they needed information, like if the, if the committee needed information about, I don't know, let's just say, you know, overtime?
Yeah.
It, it takes a long time to gather those kinds of information?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, it, because you're looking at all, all the general fund departments. And so, it is, to me, it becomes almost a mini, more than a mini, it's an actual, it's. and so it is, to me, it becomes almost a mini, more than a mini, it's an actual, it's about actual budget process, but with fifteen stakeholders that are different than the council. So, anything they ask virtually, we have to be ready to come back to them as soon as possible, because they wanna produce their report and say, okay, we checked on this, and you could get this much savings by doing that, or, you know, you could raise this much revenue by, you know, trying this, and all of that, or they're just, you know, they can be, they could take a little time, they could take a lot of time, but they take time, you know? And we're already a staff that is very lean. So, I just, I wanted to be really blunt and honest with this item, you know, that it would be a big effort, which is, I am, my job is to implement what this council desires, and if that's the priority of, you know, then that's what we will do, within whatever number you name, yeah.
Well, I, my, me personally, I think that creating some form of, and it's not, I mean, I know, we say community, you know, priority, we know that, we just need taxpayers to really delve down. I would like to see taxpayers delve down into our budget. It's, we can sit up here and we can look at the budget, we can look at our budget, we can look at what some of the shortfalls are. But I think, in this case here, for full transparency of where we're headed, I think, I think taxpayers now need to get involved. And I think that us not doing this is detrimental to our, to our long-term health and well-being of the city. But that's just my opinion. I think it's time that we, that we bring residents into this. I want, I would love to see, I would love to see our budget opened to residents who are gonna, who are gonna delve down into this. I think, I mean, that is one thing that I hear a lot of, I would love to see more transparency into the budget, I would love to see taxpayers get involved in to some of the decisions that we make that are, that are critical to our state six months from now.
Madam Mayor, I have to respectfully disagree with you. How can it be any more transparent? We have multiple budget meetings. How often do we have a group of people who come for Business From the Floor or a presentation, and then they leave right before the budget presentation? They could stay if they want to. And certainly, I think we all value the public's feedback, but it's not like they haven't had the opportunity to do it.
It's not like they haven't had the opportunity to do it, but the reality is that it's not, it's not, it's not, it's very complicated on, to the person who's not in budgets. The budget is very complicated. People don't understand, and therefore, it is difficult to get engaged. If you put it into people who can delve down into this process, I think, in my opinion, I think it is beneficial. And I think that when we talk, I mean, all of us talk about transparency, we all talk about budget shortfalls, we all, we sat here, we looked at, we got a list from every department head, and every single one of those, oh, we can't do that, we can't do that. I would really love to see residents at this point get engaged in the budget process and delve down. That's just.
What this feels like to me is, we are gonna outsource this problem to a committee, we want them to kind of be the bad guy, and come back to us and say, hey, we don't see any other option but a sales tax measure. If that's the conversation that we want to have, then let's have the courage to just have that conversation.
I'm not referring, I'm not talking about just a sales tax measure. That may be one of the options that they come up with. They may, at this point, say, you know what, let's deal with the cuts. And if we deal with the cuts, here are some areas where you can cut. I just think, at this point, where we are in our, is, is, I think the public, I think it would be beneficial to us as council members and to our residents to get some taxpayers engaged in the budget process. And I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm having a hard time sort of understanding why not. Why would we not do that? But this is my opinion.
So, Mayor, just to understand, this committee is going to be in existence for good every year?
No, just one time, just this one time. I mean, I, personally, I think, I would love to see taxpayers group to, I mean, to, a group of residents that are highly engaged in our budget process. I would love to see that, but this is, this may be the start of it. I don't know.
Yeah, this, this council introduced the new thing this year, budget workshops for public outside. So, not part of general presentations. I think department heads are coming, they're presenting their requirements based on the demand from the community. It's not that you are presenting whatever your list of items you want. Every department head came and presented to the city council, and it is a matter of encouraging, is that committee kind of members be part of that, and assess, I'm trying to.
We're just putting, we're just putting our current condition into the hands of taxpayers.
Yeah, we are the one, you know, acting in that role also, right? Yes, we have so many subcommittees, and I want to understand, for example, Department A, they have twenty million dollars, ten programs. Two programs maybe not giving the value propositions to residents. Is this committee is going to put that kind of questions to the department head? Twenty million dollars, you have ten programs, two programs are not giving the value to the residents. Maybe they are the potential candidates when the hard day comes to trim.
Or engage.
Engage, yeah. It could be even public safety, I just want to say it. In among, they may have, you know, fifteen programs, but two programs are, no, I think the value is not there. Even though public safety is a big word from the community, but we, that's why I think, I'm trying to understand the validating, and validating is a strong word, I don't, shouldn't be using that one, is that residents can help us because they're the ones who sees the value? I know, we do see it also, I mean, in Saras district.
Here's, here's what it is. I think we receive polls of what people value. Of course, people value parks because they, they're a part, they're an important part of a community, people value public safety. But in the event that we get to the point where those, that hard conversation's gonna take places, we just don't have enough revenue for our, for our expenses, I think we are fooling ourselves if we think that we're not gonna take it from the areas that fall under Parks and Recs or, or public safety. I, I think that it's gonna be a conversation, that it's gonna be super complex, and, and, and I don't think that we're, we're gonna say, okay, we don't have money, but let's make sure that we don't affect these places. That the impact will be, will be across every, every, every department I imagine.
Right. You know, I'm sure, I think all of us, we are not in disagreement engaging the residents for, you know, take their inputs. I think that's the, you know, out there, we all. And that's why we are, we have introduced the budget workshop. It's not the review, we are all talking priorities, and keeping the residents' input survey into reference, and evaluating, you know, how many dollars we have, what the expenditure. But if you are going in that route, let's assess the value proposition for those ten programs. We may not have the residents of that committee in conjunction with the department heads. If, that's, that's the angle we are going to do, and to see whether we can find some savings, rather than just cut the lowest one from the survey. So, I'm open for that kind of discussions on the accuracy, not accuracy, the, the value-driven spending. We don't do that, but we definitely trust our leadership to, you know, do that.
I just, I just wanted to add, just to add to the pool of meaning that since I became city manager, and every subsequent year in partnership with our CFO, we have added more and more and more opportunities to participate on the budget, to the point where today, we start much earlier in the process with the city council than was ever done before. So, we now have very early meetings, you know, to talk conceptually, you know, and then all the way through to the minutia of actually adopting the budget. And those are all open and public and, you know, transparent.
Where I'm stuck is, is in the cost. Is there a way to take this item, move it to the next meeting, and then get a breakdown of what Elk Grove paid, what Rancho Cordova paid, what Roseville paid for their consultant? Is that, is that, I mean, can we do that?
Can we, can we hear from the public? Because if there, after we hear from the public, I think we can have a discussion about if there's even a consensus to go forward. If there's not a consensus to go forward, we don't even have to have the staff spend time researching that.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah.
Do we have any public comments?
You have three requests to speak on this item this evening. The first is Bruce Klein. Bruce will be followed by Robert Goss.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask Hetha Vergotti to present first?
Okay. Are you agreeable to that?
Sure.
Okay, Hetha Vergotti will be first, and Bruce will be second?
Thank you.
Does that work for you guys?
It works, it works for me.
It works for me. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hetha Vergotti, and I'm a senior at Folsom High School. I'm a resident south of the Parkway and an active user of the Trails. I'm also an employee in the Parks and Recs Department of Folsom, where I am a summer camp counselor. Today, I'm here as a youth-born member of the Friends of Folsom Parkway to express my thoughts on the importance of parks and trails to the residents and community of Folsom. When we think of Folsom, we don't normally envision tall skyscrapers or bustling roads. We think of the zoo, Folsom Lake, and most importantly, the vast trails and nature the city has to offer. The efforts the city of Folsom has made to maintain and build trails, parks, and open space for the residents to enjoy is what shapes Folsom as a city. The residents clearly enjoy the benefits of the city and express gratitude towards the work. As a camp counselor, I see the enjoyment of parks daily. The camp I work at is hosted at the Andy Moran Sports Complex, and every day, we walk to Kemp Park. Here, I see my kids enjoying their time outside. What I also see is a sense of community. At Kemp Park, there is a tiny water playing structure where parents and toddlers gather around, some families I see regularly. The city created traditions with their resources. I understand that building out parks north of Highway Fifty, maintaining open space, and keeping our trails and parks safe and in great condition is a financial commitment. But I, as a future user of the trails and parks with others in my generation, greatly need that commitment to preserve the very identity of Folsom and enjoy its nature for years to come. Friends of the Folsom Parkway stands as a great asset to be involved in this committee to uphold Folsom's trails and parks. The Friends of the Folsom Parkway have an over thirty-year history of trail and open space advocacy in the city of Folsom and surrounding areas. Our members, being active trail users, know the benefits the trails and open space preservation have brought to the city of Folsom, which is why we wholeheartedly support Item Twelve on today's council agenda. We are honored to be considered as one of the participants in the proposed advisory committee, and want to participate and engage in the needs of the city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker will be Bruce Klein, and Bruce will be followed by Robert Goss.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, good evening, city manager. Very interesting discussion. When I looked at the staff report, I envisioned something a little different than the discussion I'm hearing tonight. I think it's absolutely essential that you have a committee where you have residents engaged. It's hard, even somebody like me who is pretty deep into things, to follow it through the budget process, even though I attended most of those meetings. I didn't look at this committee as one to look through and go in detail that this police activity needs to be cut, or this parks thing ought to be cut. What I look at is an opportunity for the council to get citizens plugged in, and get citizens to step up and recognize that, hey, folks, it's gonna be bad, and here's what's gonna happen in a year or two years. And I think the reality is that this council is gonna have to put a sales tax measure on the ballot. I don't think there's any way around it. And that has to happen in 2024. If you don't do it in 2024, it's gonna be a big deal. I look at this committee as one that can really help the city go through, look at the programs, and help educate folks out there about, boy, this fiscal cliff is gonna be bad if you don't do something. And here's examples of where it could be cut, not necessarily taking the council's job away in terms of suggesting that here's where you can cut. But, you know, in terms of, you know, Friends of the Folsom Parkway, you know, obviously, we would, excuse me, we would have our issues, police would have their issues, but I think it's more at a different level. I didn't look at it as, hey, we're gonna come out here, and we're gonna tell you where you guys should cut. I don't think that's our job. That's your job, that's the manager's job ultimately, when she crafts her budget and you all adopt it. But getting citizens plugged in and involved now, and say, hey, let us help be your messenger. Because, and five months is scary to me, because November twenty twenty-four is upon us now. The reality is, people vote October fifth of 2024. Your council is gonna have to have an agenda item in, let's call it, August, a year from now. And so, that six months, five months timeframe is a little bit long to me, but I definitely think that a consultant needs to help play through those things. Just give the manager the authority to execute a contract, and she's gonna be fiscally responsible, and you're gonna have to approve the contract and move forward and get citizens plugged in. I would recommend that you get people plugged in from the school, the schools as well. I've talked to board member Cara Mador Loft House, because we have lots of joint-use things that are plugged in with them. They need to be a voice. If this, let's say ultimately, it's gonna be a sales tax measure. You better get involvement of people like you have on that committee now, rather than just the five of you voting and saying, hey, we need money, you know, let's put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, your last speaker on this item is Robert Goss.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the, members of city council. Big props to Hetha and Max for coming and speaking to you tonight. They're both youth directors of Friends of Folsom Parkway. I myself am president of Friends of Folsom Parkway. And I'd just like to change the vocabulary just a little bit in the context of this discussion. Friends of Folsom Parkway are advocates for trails, obviously, the open space, tree canopy, et cetera. I'd like to change that to green infrastructure, and put that on the same par with our built infrastructure. Because if we don't invest and maintain that, we're not gonna be distinctive by nature any longer. You talk about balancing the budget and cuts in this, I suspect if you were to, you know, if you could, talk to each one of your department heads, just like, are you, are you like lean, mean, and it's getting right down to the bone? The answers are gonna be yes, yes, and yes already. So, cuts are going to be service reductions to the community. We may have some of that information already, but is that really the Folsom that we all envision? Balancing the budget shouldn't be the objective. But that's, that's, that's one objective, but it should be investment and maintenance of everything that makes Folsom great. You can't do that when you cut. You cannot do that, that's just, that algebra doesn't work. Part of this process could be, not only are we distinctive by nature, we have awards where, we're the best place, the best city in California to raise a family, et cetera, et cetera, all these things. We ought to be striving to add something to that for the long term, that causes other investment in our community, like distinctive by nature, the best city to raise a family, and the coolest medium-sized city in California, because of all the other things that we're doing, that you can't do when you cut. This advisory, the consideration of the advisory committee is, per the staff report, is fifteen people. That's three times this body. If a tax measure is put out there, you're somewhat restricted on what you can say. You've gotta share facts only. Advocacy is not really part of the city's job. I think it may be illegal at some level. The advisory committee members don't have that restriction. They get, as citizens, get to dig down deep and understand this, and they become the messengers, the educators, the influencers, the champions of a direction, the communicators back to the, to the rest of the city. You're only five. Multiply that by three, now it's twenty. Fifteen plus five is twenty. So, now you have more people that understand it at a much deeper level that can communicate this. So, I would encourage you to adopt the recommendation by the city manager. Ask the city manager to bring back a range of costs. Ask the city manager to bring back a range of costs and the services. Don't, don't hamstring the staff by an artificial amount. Get the scope, get some alternatives, and then figure out what the appropriate amount to spend is. But, but we need to balance a budget, invest and maintain this beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have no further request to speak on this item.
Okay. Any other comments, questions here?
Yeah, I haven't commented on this. It's been interesting listening to everyone. I don't have a problem with any committee being formed, especially around the budget. But I'm not interested in spending money doing it. I gathered a bunch of information from actual numbers from the budget and I think we're a couple of years off from this committee. Not, not a committee that wants to share their perspective and maintain, on how to maintain the services of the city, but spending upwards of $150,000 on a committee. I think we're a few years off. My calculations, Risk Management Fund and the General Reserve Fund, we've only been below 30% in reserves, those two funds together, twice in the last six years. So, and below by 29% and 28%. So I don't think we're there yet. I think we should be using, what I think we should be discussing is we have a minimum on our general fund reserve balance at 15. It was proposed to change it to 17. Totally great with that. I think we need to have a maximum with all general fund reserves, including the Risk Management Fund. Because this is my struggle. We're not maintaining the service that people expect in the city, but we have well above our 15% minimum in our general reserves. We can predict all we want for the next five years or 10 years or even longer, but we don't really know. But what we do know for a fact is our actuals, the last, at least I pulled actuals for the last 11 years. So I would be more interested in having a committee or even having a discussion, I don't even think we need a committee for that, talking about what is our maximum we want? When we hit our levels at, you know, when we, we don't go below the minimum, but every year, if next year we get to where, this year it's proposed, that we're, we're, this current year, at 28% with the Risk Management Fund in our general fund reserves. So we're consistently growing our revenue. Why aren't we talking about that? If we wanna maintain the services of the city, why aren't we talking about using some of that? If we're in a recession right now, why aren't we using our general fund reserves right now? During the, during COVID, we never got below 15.7% for our general fund reserves. The next year, we saw a rebound because of the ARPA funds, but that wasn't 2020. So I think while this is a really good committee, I'm not interested in actual what we're talking about, spending a bunch of money, probably not more than $10,000 on it in light of the services that are not doing. Parks and Rec, for example, has huge needs right now that are lawsuit-ready for us. I've talked about the police department plenty. And so that's where I'm at.
So just for clarification, you're saying that you want those items added to the discussion with, for residents? Or, I'm, I'm, sorry?
Um, I, you know, I, the items up there are fine. You know, I think the committee, the recommendations of who could be on that committee are fine as well. I'm not, I think we're several years off of this, unless we're gonna talk about a policy on what our cap is for our general fund reserve. The rest of it, I think, is important to get more community involvement. Everyone brings up sales tax increases or not doing it. We haven't fleshed that out as council yet. So I don't have a problem with a committee being formed and doing all the things that this has said or making it more detailed. If we do a committee, then yes, I want the general fund reserves and Risk Management Fund to be a part of that discussion.
That's a fair request.
Well, and I think we've also talked about, as a council, about reviewing our financial policies, right? We kinda joked we need to do it every 19 years, whether we need it or not, because I don't think they've been, you know, they were implemented in 2004 or something. So I wholeheartedly support that, the council having that conversation. And I wanna be clear, I think we absolutely should be talking to FAA and Friends of Folsom Parkway and Folsom Police Foundation and all that sort of stuff about our budget situation. But I don't think that is necessary to form a committee or hire a consultant. Let's, let's take one of our, or multiple of our presentations that the CFO has given and the city manager has given. Let's tweak it, let's, and let's, let's divide and conquer. Let's go on a speaking and listening tour and we each take a couple of these community groups and we go to their monthly board meeting and we, we present it. I, I just, I, I don't think this is necessary.
What, what would be your expectation of presenting it to these organizations? Like what, what is it that you're expecting that we then bring back?
I think that it's just, it's sharing the budget situation. And that, yeah, we may be, in the near future, facing cuts.
Any comments, YK?
I think I'm going to go back to what Sarah was saying. If the committee is driving towards a sales tax increase, just call it. Why we are beating around the bush?
So just for clarification, I am not pro-sales tax. So I just wanna make sure that, like that. I, I would like to put this into the hand, I would like to put, engage our residents into our budget process. It was something that I mentioned last December and we just, we've been so consumed with other things, it just hasn't happened. It's just coincidental that it's coming up now as we, you know, as, as the questions come up, is, you know, what, what do we do? Do we want a sales tax measure? I'm not in support of a sales tax measure, but I am in support of engaging our residents into our process. And if it means adding things, things that are important to us, like what Councilmember Rohba mentioned, I'm fine with that. If it means, you know, getting them, their input into our financial policies, I, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think that should be something the council should be driving. But ultimately, I think we need some form, we need taxpayers engaged in our process on a formal process. I, I, that's my thing is I would love to see taxpayers engaged in, in our budgetary issues on a formal process, not where we go present and then we come back and what are we bringing back? We could do that right now if we wanted to. But I think that a process needs to take place to give it added value to our current situation. That's, I mean, ultimately, we, we decide. You all know where I stand. I, I would love to see taxpayer engagement. If that's not what you guys want, then.
Well, I don't think that's fair to say that. We all want taxpayer engagement. I would argue that the taxpayers can engage anytime they want. The second and fourth Tuesday of every month, they can do that. They can email us their, their thoughts, as they do. So I don't think it's fair to say that we don't value taxpayer engagement or we don't want it. We absolutely do. There are plenty of opportunities for that to happen. And again, I'm perfectly fine being proactive and going out to these community organizations. You know, let's divide up. You go to the morning Rotary Club, I'll go to the evening, whatever. But it doesn't require a paid consultant, in my opinion, or, or a committee. So if somebody wants to make a motion, we can.
Yeah, and the same time also, I think in one of the discussions, I was mentioning, how many HOAs we have? How many times we have even disclosed what's going on? Sometimes, yes, it's an expectation on us. People come and involve. If that's not happening, we can go to people. So, again, I agree that we need involvement of taxpayers and it's not happening. We are trying to open up more and more budget discussions, budget workshops. Let the department heads present. If that process, we want to evolve more and more and include more taxpayers, I'm absolutely fine. And the same time, we definitely has to, again, I'm going to probably, you know, speak what Elaine was talking about, staff time. I was one of them before, believe me. Voluntarily, involuntarily, each commissioner's ask is going to build up hours and hours and hours. Yes, we think it was there before, but again, on the same time, we are asking for the accuracy, quality. They can't just, you know, grab that, you know, some draft data and put it in front of us. So it's going to be tremendous staff time. What I'm trying to propose is let's merge, let it be the same staff time and other people involved.
There's a lot, just so that you know, there's a lot of information that we already have. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna be, I, I think, pulling, pulling data on whatever it is that the committee may want. You know, I think that to throw up $150,000, I, I, I'm not, I'm really struggling with that. I, I don't, I, I mean, I didn't do my research beforehand to see if that was, if, you know, if that's in the ballpark of what it costs, if it costs 7, 60, you know, 69 or whatever, $60,000.
Up, up to $150,000. I do wanna make that clear. And we can make that change. She, she. Yeah, it's up to, you know. And then we can change, this is not, she's not presenting this. She's just asked, answering your request to bring information forward. So you can manipulate it however you want. So we're not, we're not ever, ever handcuffed to anything that is ever presented to us in that way. So, you know, you asked for, if you don't like the 150, then you said up to 75, but, you know, this was your agenda item. So what would you like it to be?
I personally, I would like it to be a Citizens Priorities Advisory Committee. I would love to see what other cities have paid for a consultant. I, I'm really even struggling at 75,000. 75,000 is, it just seems to me, I, I, I don't know. I, you know, it's, I would love to see a Citizens Advisory Committee created. I would love to see a delve down into our budget, into the issues that I think, you know, I would love to get community engagement. And for me, right now, it's really about community engagement, getting taxpayers into our, our budgets. That's what, that's really what I wanted from this whole process, whether it's created community priorities or whether it's a taxpayers' association group or whatever it is, I would like to see community, I would like to see.
So were you willing to make a, a motion on what you would like to see?
Yeah, sure, I will agree. I would like us to be able to approve a Citizens Advisory Committee that has the recommendations listed below, with maybe some exception of adding someone from the PTA and someone from the Student Advisory Board, which were two recommendations that were given to me. And to be able to have, you know, community meetings. I don't even know if 10 really is, 10, is 10 really necessary? I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I guess I just don't know. I don't know what other cities have really done, but I would like to see something formed. And I don't know if that's a clear motion. Yeah.
If I may, Madam Mayor, it will be a direction to staff and staff will need to bring a resolution back in a future council meeting for the council to establish an ad hoc committee. With, with those parameters, you're giving direction to staff.
Okay. All right, so that's my motion.
Is it fair to say that Mayor's motion is establish a community priority committee?
It would be giving direction to come back.
Not establishing tonight.
Oh, establishing, okay. Oh, giving direction.
To establish, to establish.
Giving me direction to formalize this with a future staff.
Got it, okay, yes, thank you. Okay, so the, the motion fails. Okay. All right, that's it, right? All right. Will a clerk please call the next item?
Okay, your next item this evening is council requests for future agenda items.
I have two brief requests. One is, you know, we got about $8 million in ARPA funds and I know we allocated that to different things. And I think it would just be helpful to close the loop at some point if, if that list could come back to us and maybe show, you know, how much we allocated, what it actually ended up costing and, and, you know, is it done, is it pending or whatever? Just, again, just kinda close the loop so we know where we stand on that.
I actually put out a request to my team and they're working on that now so that we can come back to the city council.
Okay. And then I have received a couple of comments from residents lately about the See Click Fix system. And, you know, a couple of people have mentioned, well, you know, I report something and then now it shows that it's closed or I don't know what the terminology is used on the app, but, you know, then I drive by that thing and it hasn't been fixed. So does, does close mean that it's, we acknowledge it or we've assigned it to a staff member or it really is closed or whatever? So just maybe kind of an update on the See Click Fix system and, and that whole process.
I think that's a good suggestion. I have asked that Chris Shepard on our communications team take over on See Click Fix and he has a really unique sort of technology and PR background. I talked with him today and he is, he says that sometime in early fall, you know, he's delving into it right now and he's also gonna be talking to users to see kinda what, what they're looking for from See Click Fix. And then I asked him to provide consistency across the departments of how they're responding to requests. And he thought by fall, he would have all the data to come back and share with the city council.
Great, thank you.
Because I think that's a good direction.
Mayor, I think I'm going to put one in the pipeline. It's no urgent. I know we just approved some changes and given more leverage to Community Development Department, maybe in about two to three months timeframe. We just want to see, you know, the, the ratio of applications coming through her, you know, hardworking team's desk and how the processing is happening. I know you adjusted some staff also for a good reason. And the consultants, you know, back and forth is also going to be minimized. You explained that one during the budget process. We want to give you some time, you know, but I just want to put that out there to see. I just want to echo one more time Senator Roger Neelo's words, to bring more economic development to your time, your city service, providing the service and going and above and beyond besides the beautiful parks and trails and public safety and all those. So we want to help Community Development Team. That's one of the big ones for the businesses, how they see us as a city in the permits and approvals and those processes. So maybe, you know, two to three months, four months timeframe.
So a presentation?
About the statistics and the workload and how many permits are coming to you and how the processing time? And is there a thing called, across the desk, 24 hours approvals? If so, how it is happening?
Can I add on to that, YK? This was something I was gonna bring up too. Basically, in line with what he's saying is what is being done to remedy some of the situations that we've all heard as council and, and you've, you've heard too and you've talked through it. And I think there's been lots of good discussions going on behind the scenes, but maybe have you present what is being done so we can communicate that and the business development and our small businesses can, can hear, because they're patient. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense. And that's, I, I would gently suggest that we maybe wait a few more months because Ms. Johns has been working really hard to kind of rejuggle very limited resources to the areas that need them. And I think we need some time to see how that pays off. So maybe not two or three months, maybe further out to see, okay, this is, this is how things are trending.
Yeah, we have several vacancies and recruitment's underway. So it's not, it's, if you're trying to understand, you know, contracts and things like how many plan checks are being sent out versus how many inspections are being, that is just, it's not stable right now. So it's not a good reflection. But if you're just looking at the overall numbers and what we're managing and what our processes are, I can report out on that, but not in terms of understanding the difference between staffing and contracting.
Yeah, I, I'm more interested on the, the second part of the numbers, how the efficiency is going. So we are, I'm okay personally to wait a couple of more months.
I am too. And it's also more on, you know, what is, what is, obviously, your hiring and your filling in positions. So that is part of what's being done, right? So what is being done? What is the plan for the future when you're fully staffed? You know, kind of that proactive, what are the actions being taken to hopefully either maintain or fix it or whatever? So.
We understand.
And by the end of the year, I think, was fair-ish?
Fiscal year?
No, calendar. At least we want to put this in front of you. You know, that, that, it's important, you know, just to give more, you know, lead time. So it's not just a month or two, so.
I, I have a request too. I have a request for a presentation from Choose Folsom on their recent Economic Development Study Mission. You know, the city of Folsom sent four people. That was a huge investment. There are so many nuggets and I think opportunities and I think, just so many things that we walked away from this study mission. And I would like to see presentations after these because we send people, and so, you know, where does that information go? And so...
I'll talk to Mr. Galliardi, invite him to do that.
All right. All right, next is city manager reports.
Okay, thank you. A four-month pipeline construction project is set to begin in late July and lasts through November. And it's going to require phased lane closures on Folsom Boulevard. The first phase of the project will consist of night work at the intersection of Folsom Boulevard at Blue Ravine. It's going to start on July 30th and extend through August 6, and it will impact traffic between 7:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. And you can learn more at folsom.ca.us/folsomblvdd, Boulevard Updates. The Folsom Public Library has eliminated all late fees for overdue materials. The decision approved by this Folsom City Council at your July 11th meeting aims to enhance access and remove barriers for library patrons. Charges for lost or damaged items will continue to be enforced, ensuring responsible use of library resources. Library staff is currently in the process of removing existing fines from accounts. And if you have any questions about your account or you think you see an incorrect charge, please contact LIBCIRK@folsom.ca.us or call 916-461-6130. Folsom Neighborhoods will partner with the Folsom Police and Fire Departments yet again for another amazing annual National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1st, an event that I always enjoy very much. The program promotes involvement in crime prevention, police community partnerships, and neighborhood community building. Each year, Folsom police officers, firefighters, city officials, and hundreds of residents attend dozens of National Night Out events throughout the city. And you can learn more and find out about a National Night Out event near you on the Folsom Police Department website. The 10th Annual Community Service Day takes place on Saturday, September 16th. And one really special component of Community Service Day is the Neighbors Helping Seniors Program. And that initiative aims to help local seniors in need of a helping hand. Projects can include gutter cleaning, weeding and pruning, painting, and other similar exterior maintenance and repair tasks. You can submit a Neighbors Helping Senior Project application by August 1st if you have a loved one who you know could use a friendly helping hand. Find out more at folsomcommunitieservice.org. And then just a reminder that the city council will be on recess through the first half of August. So please note that this city council will not reconvene until Tuesday, August 22nd. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Roarbaugh.
I hope more people sign up for the Seniors Helping, was it?
Yep.
Seniors? It's not Seniors Helping. Neighbors Helping Seniors. That's what I did last year, and it was so rewarding and so much fun. And it was so easy to go above and beyond what they needed, because they needed more. But I just really briefly want to say thank you for your kindnesses, those that reached out or thought through the last couple of weeks. That's it.
All right. Councilmember Aquino.
Yeah, just two things. So to celebrate Parks Make Life Better Month, my husband and I and Parks and Rec Commission Chair Brian Wallace and Parks and Rec Commissioner Bill Davis and his wife Cheryl went out to Economy Park on Sunday, and we played bocce ball. And so that was a lot of fun. I would like to suggest to our library director that we loan bocce ball equipment at the library. I know we loan disc golf equipment, so that seems like a natural to add that. And then finally, Alice and Lauren Bell, who are District 3 residents, are in the audience tonight. And they invited me to attend an open house for the clubhouse at Toll Brothers, the 55-plus active adult community south of 50. They are hosting three open houses at the clubhouse where members of the public can go. They've already had two Saturdays. The third one will be this Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00. It is absolutely spectacular. 18,000 square feet, indoor-outdoor pools, seven pickleball courts, two bocce ball courts, fitness center. It is absolutely spectacular. So Pam, you and your staff work so hard on those. You guys might want to try to go out there and just check it all out. Very, very impressive. And Alice is working with the folks out at Toll Brothers to invite me to come out to just do a little bit of presentation about the city. I did suggest to her that if she wants a really good crowd, that we invite the fire chief and the police chief, because they're a much bigger draw than a council member. So I hope when the time comes, you will indulge me on that. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, for me, spent the last, spent last Wednesday through Sunday in Austin, Texas. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Vice Mayor, Chalantula.
Mine is going to be, you know, I'll make it quick. Chief, thank you so much for extending the invite to one of your captains, Eric Adams. I think he's spent over 26 year and 27 years, I think, throughout his great lifehood serving Folsom. I just want to call out in front of residents, you know, thank you on behalf of Folsom residents and this council for extending us, and pass that thank you message to him and his family as well. And likewise, there are so many team members, Elaine, from your side, who spent two decades, three decades, serving Folsom. You know, if I'm not coming, I'm not seeing, but it's still okay. We want to sincerely thank, you know, for all your services. I just want to, you know, make that record, and all executives, if you can pass that one, you know, we mean it. I know we talked about the cuts and all those. Please, you know, let's not, that's not the intent, you know? We had a reason why we were talking the cuts, but not the lowest one is going to go away. So extend the sincere thanks in your meetings to all of them who are working so hard, especially the retirees. And Marcus presented in a wonderful, a decent short presentation. But water rebate program, I just want to call out City of Folsom. We have quite a few water rebate programs, including flushing the toilets with the water saver as well. We're going to do every day, 10 times, 15 times a day. At least, you know, take an opportunity and take those rebate programs. It is, saving the water is a great thing on this earth. It's not the state rebate, state cuts or city cuts, we don't have water, that's not the point. Save the water is a great word. And that's what my mom was telling when I was young, drinking half water, half cup, and throwing the remaining half out. She said, "No, only take half cup." So that's the one. And utilities, delinquencies. Liz, you know, I was talking to her in our agenda reviews. She presented an excellent details on the delinquencies. But if for some reason, again, Folsom, from that 134 people, you can't make payments for financial reasons or something, please reach out to city team. They have solutions for you.